Okay, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Beal, any other questions from the commission? And speak up because I can't see any other commissioners very well, so. Okay, seeing and hearing none. It's the applicant's turn to ask questions of staff, does the applicant have any questions to Mr. Hussein?
Yeah. If you have any questions. Um, yeah.
Just questions on his testimony. You'll have an opportunity to testify for yourself if you have any questions regarding what the director said.
I have a question. So when we got this. When they put in the permit for this, one thing that the city asked for was a lockbox for emergency. Police.
Have they interrupted?
I cannot tell.
That's all I'm asking the question.
Point of order, point of order. Let's, let's identify who the person asking the question is and please approach the podium.
So because of that, we look like this.
I'm asking you a question.
Based on his testimony, the chair would like you to identify yourself for the record and then go make your determination.
Good evening, my name is Angel Ortiz, I live in Los Alamos. So I have a question for applying director here. So when we put in the. Put in the application to do these gates, the old planning director, he gave us a list of items that needed to be done. One of the things fire department asked for was a lockbox, that's exactly what they asked for, so they got 24/7. Access to place, now you're telling us, I just want to know who. Did the chief say that he didn't want the lockbox? I'm just wondering if you come up with them saying that they didn't, that they. But when they told us it was sufficient.
So the fire chief, the fire marshal, and the fire chief were part of the development review. They had the opinion and you can see at the part of the packet if you go online, their remarks are written with their signature. So it's the fire chief and the fire marshal.
And just one more question, this committee, all it is is a recommendation to what we're asking for. Correct, the ban of full councils, the final decisions, just a recommendation, correct, thank you. And how is this going to change with the new administration company? Are we gonna have to do this again? This is a very touchy subject.
Are there any other questions from, from neighboring, okay, so we have the applicant, did the applicant have any questions?
Yes, he's standing there, Mr. Chair.
Can you send Mr. Martinez, Tony Martinez?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
You have questions for Mr. Hussein?
At this moment, I do not specifically for Mr. Hussein, but I do actually do have one specific question for Mr. Hussein. There was a multiple communications prior to this meeting regarding the, you know, the intense emotions around this, this subject. And I know at the beginning of the meeting, you mentioned that you had been there, but no longer had any interest in the property, meaning that you sold your properties. But you failed to disclose and we disclosed many times prior to this meeting with Mr. Hubler, the prior director, as well as the current director regarding the lawsuit. That was filed against the Los Alamos. What's that?
Do you have a question for Director Hussein?
Yeah, I'm just wondering why from the very beginning, Mr. Hussein, that Mr. Martinez was not asked to recuse himself from the meeting.
So as a, as a, and while we staff, we just recommend, we cannot recommend any commission members to request that. Recuse themselves or not become part of the commission, your product action, we're just advising by.
Even if there's a conflict of interest?
We, we can, that's why there is a, there is a spreading of, or and then we can just explain them, or they give them all the permission and they're the ones who decide to refuse themselves.
But there's someone that is directly, you know, associated with the commission, even the recommending body, who, you know, from their perception of this issue.
And Mr. Mr. Salazar, I understand you have some statements to make and you can make that during your, your presentation if you'd like, but this.
I'm not making any statements, I'm just asking why you weren't refused at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Martinez. That's, that's my only question, is that coming into the meeting, I, I thought it was, it was communicated to us that you would either refuse yourself or we would be given the opportunity at the beginning of the meeting to ask you to refuse yourself. Um, I patiently waited there as you went down paragraph number five, you know, public comments and business for visitors. We can look back at the recording, you specifically stated that we only would talk if it was regarding items not on the agenda. So I refrain from speaking at that moment.
That is.
Because there's items.
So if you could take a seat, Mr. Salazar. This moment is reserved for questions to staff and I believe Mr. Hussein answered your question to the best of his ability. Do you have anything further to add to that, Mr. Hussein?
Um, I guess not.
I have a correction.
Okay, so are there any other questions from neighboring property owners that received notice? That would like to ask any questions regarding Mr. Hussein's testimony?
Mr. Chair, there is a woman here who I think has questions. Is there clarification in his testimony or?
Yes.
She's.
Questions regarding Director Hussein's testimony?
Yes, I, I disagree with one of his comments here. Um, I'm starting to live in.
Could you identify yourself?
My name is Margaret Crary, I live in 1032 Los Angeles Circle. I've been a resident there, I purchased my property in 2005. In 2005, that gate, there was a gate installed there, it was before the homeowners association was established. And the city building inspector was very involved with it, it was all approved by the city. The problem was that the gate was not a commercial gate.
Okay.
So he said that.
Okay, Mr. Crary. These are, these are questions for staff.
Okay, it was just a correction of what he said, he was saying that we put the gate in, the gate was put in by the builders before there was an association.
There'll be an opportunity for all of you to present. Mr. Chair.
So again, let's.
Tell me if you have a question.
I am opposed.
Not just yet. This is purely cross-examination of the director's testimony, you'll have a moment to testify yourself.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm just trying to be clear here.
Thank you Commissioner, I appreciate that. So again, let, let me clarify the procedures here. So staff makes their presentation, which Mr. Hussein did. And then it's cross-examination time. Just as the commission asks questions to Director Hussein. The applicant and neighboring property owners who received notice of this meeting can cross-examine the director regarding his testimony here tonight. So are there any further questions from neighboring property owners to Director Hussein? The applicant and neighboring property owner will then be allowed to make their presentation after this portion of the meeting. Seeing none, hearing none, we will.
Actually, I have one last question. Is there any way, Mr. Hussein, that we could take all this until the April meeting?
That question's out of order for now.
Okay.
Until we, this hearing is open, we need to actually conclude the public hearing.
Okay.
And if you want to say that during your testimony, I think you're fine.
That was a question for Mr. Hussein.
I understand that, that's part of the meeting we're in, we have an open public hearing and it's quasi judicial procedures here. So ask your patients and allow the chair to do this. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
That is correct, Commissioner, right, thank you for. Thank you Commissioner, right, that, that's exactly it, we've opened the public hearing and now we're at the point to where we gotta continue with the public hearing and conclude the public hearing. So again, this is the portion of the meeting where the applicant can present his case. So Mr. Salazar, are you the representative presenting on behalf of the association here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead and present, please.
So again, I'm Michael Salazar, I'm a resident of the Los Alamos Community Association, currently the president of the association. Jim, just a little bit of background history, when I bought the property back in 2017. We bought the property, it was disclosed to us that it was a gated community and there was gate infrastructure at the community when we bought our properties. The realtor at the time had communicated, communicated to us, to the previous owners, that the gates had been inoperable for about a year to a year and a half prior to us moving in and that since they have lived in the property, the gates have worked intermittently. But to their knowledge, the gates were there from the beginning of the development in 2001. Mr. Martinez, who, who is the commissioner and director of the board, was at the time the vice president of the community association as well as another individual who's in the meeting tonight was the president. And upon living there for about a year, no meetings had been called, no dues had ever been collected and the gates were still inoperable. The community started having some issues as far as break-ins, packages being stolen, stolen from our doorstep, having individuals just driving around the community became an issue. Mr. Martinez at the time was getting his exit to sell the two properties that he owned inside of the community and called a meeting to actually try to attempt to dissolve the association. And pretty much to get his books cleaned so that he could sell his properties. A couple of months after that, a couple of members of the community came together and decided, and me myself, because I travel a lot with the military and have young kids, that my only goal is to get the gates fixed. So we had a meeting, had a quorum, and that's whenever I got voted in on just the single basis that we were going to fix these gates. Oh, we did so, everybody voted for the gates except for two individuals, Mr. Martinez was a no vote and from the very, very beginning sent a email to myself that he had no interest in the infrastructure for the upgrade and that he wished to just be able to sell his properties and move on with his life. He, he, he did so, but we didn't get any Mr. Martinez, that whenever we voted to get the gates fixed, that he was the current property owner and would have to be held responsible for that portion of the upgrades to the gates. Doing upgrades to the gates was nothing new, Mr. Martinez, when he was president of the association collected many times to fix the existing infrastructure that was there, which failed because it was residential infrastructure and not built for commercial. Um, I, we get it, at the time, he owned two properties, he was having to pay double than everyone else, so we understand his, his opposition and planning to sell his homes, why did not pay? Long story short. In the second home that he was selling, we voted, passed it, it's in the application, the vote that we took that we collected the dues from everyone except Mr. Martinez and unfortunately, we have to put a lien on the home prior to him being able to sell his house. That lawsuit went to court, it's filed here in the city of Espinola, we went before Mr. Judge Madrid. I think it's public as far as what the outcome was for that, the association was in full compliance and within its authority to go ahead and carry out that lien as we are a governing body that can vote on infrastructure upgrades for the community. Now where this becomes an issue is that the day, literally the night that I was going to turn on our gates, I sent an email to the community letting them know that we were super excited, we had just all incurred a $10,000 cost, we were excited about the safety for the community. And we get an email out of the blue from Mr. Hubler, who was the prior director, Mr. Muhammad, stating that we were out of compliance, that it was a public road and that if we closed those gates, that, you know, basically he was going to call the police on us. We, we don't know for sure, but if, the timing shows that, you know, Mr. Martinez was the one who reached out to Mr. Hubler and the majority of the community thought that this was a private road since the time that they bought their homes in this community. Of course, according to the class survey, you read it, there is a little technical portion in there that it says that it has been dedicated to the public for interest and egress. So at that point, we decided to have a sit-down meeting with Mr. Hubler and discuss with him, you know, okay, what is the issue, what happened here? Because these gates have been here prior to the first home that even went up. These gates didn't magically appear, we were not the original people to put in the gates in 2019 and stated, and I think that's just, you know, accidental on Mr. Muhammad's part, but the gates were there prior to any home being built in 2002. Mr. Hubler did verify that in his, in his, in his investigation. So Mr. Hubler and I, obviously, we found ourselves in a difficult situation because he went back through all the city records trying to find any type of meeting minutes on the approval of this community and these gates. Because we both agreed that they didn't just erect out of anywhere, they have been there, everybody has always assumed it's a gated community. Unfortunately, there was no meeting minutes that documented that outcome in 2001 when this was done. We reached out to, to the land developer himself as well as the surveyor who's actually planning on zoning at the county. The planning zoning director at the county laughed because he said, no, that's a private road, and I said, well, it's technically not, this is what it says right here. And he said, oh shoot, that, that was a mistake, no, maybe we can just change the verbiage and, and dedicate it. It was always an assumption that it was a public road, so I went back to Mr. Hubler, explained this to him, he says, wow, I understand that maybe it was a mistake, but we can't just change it, there's a due process that it's got to go through. So in our negotiations with Mr. Hubler, we reached out to the chief of, of the fire department, who I actually have a letter signed off by him, I don't know if he's still the current chief, but the chief at the time went and had a meeting with him, had a meeting with the chief of police. Mr. Hubler also had me have meetings with all of the city entities that would possibly need access in and out, so I went and talked to the, to the Espinal Public Schools and the event that they ever had a disabled in our community to be able to get in. Long story short, there's a, there's a program called the Knox Program, to answer your question, this is Quintana. There's, there's a, there's a program called the Knox Program that's used by major municipalities across the United States. It's a program that municipality sign, sign up for, which our city has signed up for, so the fire department is, is a, is a member of that body. And essentially, they get a special code, okay, I had to go fill out an application that's got signed off by the fire department. I got sent off to the Knox Company and they sent us a core that we then installed at our gate. So then all emergency response entities to include the hospitals, the, the police department and the fire department essentially can come to our community and they have a key, and I can, I don't give them that key. This key is handled by a third-party company that provides it to, to protect people, because a major municipality sign up is, is a member of this program. You know, these keys are very tightly controlled, so the fire department can come to our community, put this key and turn it, and it opens up the gates. Police department is also supposed to have a copy of that key, whether or not every individual, every fire truck has it, I don't know those logistics, but that is the responsibility of the fire department and the police department. We also provided them a code as a backup to that Knox Box key. And in the event there's really a big emergency, they just bust through the gate, we have insurance, we discuss that as well, right, life over property anytime. So we did take a lot of time, you know, we just didn't fix these gates and, and turn them on. We met with all of the proper staff, I, I don't know if part of our application, if we provided copies for all of the entities that signed off. But we even met with RTD, we met with the Presbyterian Ambulance Department, we met with chief of, of the fire, the fire department, chief of police. And I think that wraps up about everybody that we met with. So with that. We met with all these bodies, Mr. Hubler did give us the temporary approval, because at first he was asking us to just keep the gates open while we resolve this issue. So Mr. Hubler, this is a very touchy subject with our neighbors, we just got out of a lawsuit with Mr. Martinez. You know, we all did this for the safety of our families, you know, please allow us that this does not escalate to becoming a bigger issue. So we agreed to put the code, if you guys go to our community right now, there's a, there's a plaque right there that literally has the code 000 pound for you to be able to come in and out of the community, that was our way to validate that we are not denying any access to the community because of the technicality in the plaque. The, the city of Espinola has never done any maintenance to this road, not to our knowledge since I've been there in 2017 and not to any of the other residents that date back to almost the beginning of the, of the, of the community. We, in our, in our packet, Mr. Hubler did ask what was our plan to, to maintain the road, so we consulted a company out of Albuquerque to give us a quote of whatever costs to fog sale the road, what it possibly repaid it if it needed, and that's what's inside the packet. We did not expense that, we have not collected any dues, that was just why our plan would be if we took over the road to maintain the road. All set of utilities, easements, those of course would stay with the plaque, we have no. We're not trying to take any of those back in our ownership, all we want to be able to do is keep our gate closed as a gated community as it was originally thought that it was from the very beginning. What's caused this big, you know. Misunderstanding, I guess, is one, it was a mistake at the very beginning, bad record keeping as far as how it got approved at the city as well as there was a personal conflict within the community because of, you know, financial reasons that it went to court, that has obviously escalated the situation, so. That's kind of the whole story in a nutshell. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Salazar. We will now go ahead and ask the commission, mission, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Salazar, in reading this email from you, you indicated that the voting, the majority of the community had voted in favor of privatizing the road through your homeowners associations and the rules for no meetings.
Yes.
What is the percentage of residents that have to, what percentage do you have to be in order for a vote to pass?
From the majority vote, but we must have a quorum.
Okay, so are you telling me 100% of the residents voted for this?
No, ma'am, if I remember correctly, I want to say. Everybody that voted, voted yes. Yeah, you know, I don't want to lie.
Let me rephrase my question. When you said the majority, what is the, what, how is that identified by a percentage, is it 70%?
No, it's usually majority, so anything, so 51% would be a majority.
Of anyone that attends and votes?
Anyone that attends.
Because I saw in your packet that all residents were asked to vote, so I'm gathering that not all residents.
We, we, out of all the voting that we've done, we've never had 100% turnout, there's usually one or two homes that don't turn in their votes. There's, there's, there was a couple homes that are their second homes, it's not their primary residence. We do email and we provide them usually a printout ballot for them to provide their votes. So usually we've had one or two that do not vote. I, I, because I took a sworn oath, I don't remember off the top of my head what exactly those percentages were, but for a tough task, it has to be more than half of the people that voted.
Okay. And you said that you had gone to look at what the developers had done, probably through permits and things like that.
Yes, ma'am.
Somewhere along that way, there had to have been some kind of knowledge that this was going to be a city street. Do you, I did, was any of that, did you discover any of that?
So Mr. Hubler, during his investigation, literally could not find any documentation on how this street was approved and what the agreement was between the city and the developer. So that was the information that we got from Mr. Hubler. As far as from, from our side goes, we do not have any documentation because the developer came in, he bought the five acre plot of land. He, he actually developed the road, I was told, he put in the gates and then he, he started, at first he, I think he was planning to build all the homes himself and then after he built so many homes, he actually started selling the lots individually and allowing other contractors to build the lots. So the gates were there prior to the homes ever being built and the gates were always closed. Now, where Mr. Martinez was saying that we were not following the rules, because he was a new community, while was a gated community himself. He was a president of the community himself and actually fixed the gates and was the maintainer of the gates for many years, was the configuration of the gate had changed. Prior to when we made our change in 2019, it had a sensor on the outside of, of the subdivision, so when you would drive up, it just hit a loop sensor and the gate would automatically start opening for you. It was built like a residential system and it also had residential openings. Um, meaning there was no code, there was no clickers. But it was told by some of the community members that at the very, very beginning of the subdivision, some of them were actually provided clickers. So it was sometime between the original development that it went from just having clickers that they put in a loop sensor. What changed whenever we were upgraded in 2019, that was the openers, as well as at that point, we had put a keypad clicker, so we could technically deny only people that had a clicker and keep that attention, and should the community.
In your homeowners association, is there any discussion in there, it's very clear by the survey that you have specific property lines?
Yes.
And on this commission, I am not the expert in that, we have the expert, that's Commissioner Hill. But in your homeowners associations or anywhere, how is the, the road addressed in terms of ownership?
We, as far as we know, we don't own any, we, even though the, the association owns, we thought we owned the road, right? So that was something we thought we had to maintain. But as far as individual lot owners, we only maintain right up to the road, so we maintain.
It's your impression that if you look at this property line for this particular lot, those are the boundaries of that particular.
That's the boundaries of that particular lot and then the road and then there's also a drainage portion at the top of the lot that, so the, the association and our bylaws calls out the fence that, that borders in the purity, the gates and that drainage portion as well as, you know, the road if we were to take the road, so the road would not, it wouldn't be like individual lots would have a section of road that they were responsible for maintaining, the road as a whole would be maintained as one, as an asset to the association.
Okay. And your presentation actually answered another one of the questions, but have you been counseled on all of the liabilities that you may inherit, for lack of a better word, by having this road private?
The only consultation that I have actually had is my wife and I own a property in Tusukia, which is also part of a gated community and I reach out to that homeowners association, because that one's totally private, they maintain that all on their own. And so I've asked to see their books and I sat down with their commission to kind of ask them, you know, how do you guys go about it? As far as the legal liability. I'd be lying if I said that I have consulted on that. I'm sure that at that point, but right now, we have insurance as the community, so if someone got hurt or a road caused damage to a vehicle that we'd be responsible for, we would definitely add that to our insurance policy to make sure that we're covered as an association.
All right, I think those are my only questions for you, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Quintana. Are there any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Beal.
Thank you, thank you for the floor, thank you, fellow commissioners. And Mr. Salazar. I have a couple of questions, maybe 10, but let's start with the first one, how did the survey of record, in other words, how did the surveyor of record determine it was a private road or a, or a public road? How did he determine it was a mistake to call it a, a, a public road?
Because when I went, I, I went in person, Mr. Beal, Commissioner Beal, to go and ask him, because originally, when I was talking to Mr. Hubler, the community wanted to understand that the cost that we would have to incur to go through this process. And so I was informed that he was, he had standards on my survey, I went to his office and I, I basically explained to him what we were trying to do and he, he basically said, no, that's a private road, it's not a public road, so he was just under the impression that it was private as well. But then whenever we printed out the plaque and we looked at the description, at that moment, it was like, oh, okay, I can see why now. And that's how that came about.
Okay. He didn't show you any of the documentation that may have said that Mr. Doryval, and, and, yeah, that the Doryvals intended that road to be a private road, did he give you any affidavits that they had signed that it was a private road, anything like that?
He did not, Mr. Beal, I also did not ask him for that documentation. I specifically just went to go and ask him, you know, if it was changed, what would it cost and could you do it for us?
So that's hearsay then.
Yes, sir.
Because they did sign it, they signed it in front of a little republic, they, they should have read what they were signing, so. Okay, second question is, do you have covenants, restricted covenants for Los Al, this, this subdivision?
We do have covenants, Mr. Beal.
Do they say anything, I don't have, I have them in front of me, nor have I recovered them from public records, but do they say anything about this road?
I, I'd have to check. I don't want to say yes.
Thank you so much, if you don't mind. Okay. So you, you had mentioned that it was intended to be a gated community, you had also mentioned that you had talked to a gated community in Tusukia and that's in Santa Fe County. Wouldn't doubt if this is in Santa Fe County too, but the Santa Fe, the, the gated community in Tusukia. Wouldn't doubt if this is in Santa Fe County too, but the Santa Fe, the, the gated community in Tisuki. I guess that would fall under the Santa Fe County jurisdiction. This one falls under the city of Espanola jurisdiction. Unless I'm wrong, the gated community in Tisuki falls under the jurisdiction of the, the community of Tisuki. I'm not sure. But I, I would think that there would be some, some differences as far as what and how this road would be handled as far as it being public and or private. But that's just a statement on my part, not really a question for you, Mr. Salazar. So, and I made a note here that the only documentation available that determines the custodial jurisdiction of this road is the plaque then.
Yes. From our documentation, as well as from what residents recall from when they moved in. But as far as legal, you know, concrete evidence, the only thing we have is what's on the plaque.
Okay.
We have emails from this, we also have an email that came from previous members that were a part of the city council in like twenty twelve-ish. That asked the city whether or not they could research whether or not it was public or private. And to my recollection, I believe we were told it was private, but it wasn't an email. It was, it wasn't any type of concrete documentation to back up that statement, but we do have an email from twenty twelve, from twenty thirteen. From people within the city stating they also assumed that it was a practice, when it snows, we've never had a snowplow go inside of our community, but like pile of snow. Or, or, or any type of maintenance of the road at all since the beginning of the community. But to, to answer your question.
Okay, who, who paved that? Go ahead. Okay, so the city doesn't go in and maintain anything. They don't plow the road when it snows, they don't, they don't sand it, nothing. If anything does happen to that road, everybody in that community is, is obligated and, and agrees to, to maintain that road as it is right now without, without any decision made this evening.
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
To give you a full disclosure though, I don't believe that there's been any maintenance down to the road since it was originally paved.
Okay, and to harp on, on Commissioner. Commissioner Quintana's.
I bought the first house.
Concern, I think I'm listening to my echo. But to harp on Commissioner Quintana's concern, one, one, one thing that does stand out for me is the majority of the, of the folks that own lots in this subdivision have voted for this road to become a, a private road. Am I correct on that? Is that what you meant, you had said?
That is correct.
Hmm, okay. All right, I believe that's all I have for you, Mr. Salazar. Mr., Mr. Chair, thank you for the floor. Thank you, my fellow commissioners, for your patience.
Thank you, Commissioner Vio. Any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Casalos has questions, Mr. Chair.
The only question that I have is, you're talking about the metro, where I'm assuming my mirror involved in.
No, Mr. Red Ball was the, the gentleman that bought the whole five acre lot and developed the property, subdivided and developed the property.
The question I have, right here, he gives everything to the city.
That, that, that's where the, where the, where this issue has, has arisen, is that what?
But this was done in two thousand, twenty years ago. I have a question that I, I said, you know, twenty years later, the fire, the owner is proposing that this road be private.
Because we were asked to keep our gates, so these, these gates, so we all bought our homes in this community with gates, assuming that we were a gated community. And the gates were, were, were closed internally because they had technical issues with the gates. When we upgraded the system in twenty nineteen, the gates were basically to remain closed and the city came in and said, you guys cannot close those gates.
But it's actually, it should be dedicated to public forever, with a purpose of efus and efus. And for the construction and maintenance of utilities. And the last part that said that planning jurisdiction needs to change.
Exactly, so, so that's the issue, Mr. Casalos, is that, what, he dedicated the road to the city, but then he put private gates from the very beginning, so. Was it a private road, was it a public road, but it's always been treated as a private road?
I bought the first house that they built, and the gates are actually locked. So, you know, I had, it was like, I mean, to get in there, you had to, you had to get the manual.
Point of order, point, point of order, I, I hear someone else speaking, so you'll get your opportunity to speak. This, this time is reserved for questions from the commission to the applicant, so thank you.
I, I guess, to, to just say, what Mr. Salazar said, Victor Salazar said, Mr. Martinez was the, he bought the first home in the community, just so that it's on record and will be recorded. That originally, those gates were locked, and the only way to actually enter the premises was to get a key from Mr. Red Ball.
Okay, thank you. Did, did you have any other follow-up or any other questions, Commissioner Casalos?
He's saying no, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Salazar, I have a follow-up question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have follow-up questions. When you or any other property owner purchased the property. I'm trusting you would have been provided a copy of this survey plaque of the subdivision.
I believe so, yes, as part of the.
Okay, so that language was there, so it was fully disclosed. I've heard repeatedly this evening that this has been a private road or treated as a private road. And my own take on this is it should be defined as it's always been a gated area. Gated access, but that doesn't change the definition of the road, which this clearly has been reported as being public.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted.
Yeah, you're gonna be correct, that in the plot, it has stated that from the very beginning.
And Mr. Casalos, Commissioner Casalos questioned why twenty years later? And you said this all came up because we upgraded the, the gate. Did anyone direct you to upgrade the gate other than your own?
So the gates themselves have been the same since two thousand and one, the actual physical gates. The only thing we changed is the arm that opens and closes the gate. That's what was changed, the brain behind it. Yeah, we went from a residential system to a commercial system, so the gates themselves have been the same in front of the community. Like I said, another reason why this is a big issue is because we bought these homes being told that they were, it was a gated community. So if this all of a sudden becomes a public road and we open our gates, we just devalueize, devalue all of our properties within this gated community.
Well, I, I guess what I would say to that is that you purchased in this subdivision as a gated community with the perception that you were going to have a, a more secure area.
Yes.
You weren't gonna have traffic that was uninvited or the residents up. But it's clear by this survey that knowledge was disclosed, whether you knew it, whether you read it or not, I can't control. Like you knew that this was considered a public road.
I don't think anybody knew, man, to be honest with you, that it was public until, until, when it became that we all became aware that it was public. Was whenever Mr. Martinez contacted Mr. Hubler and we were told to be your gates open. That was the first time the city had ever mandated that those gates be required to stay open. And at that point, we asked under what consensus do we have to leave our gates open, we're a gated community, and then we were pointed to that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Quintana. Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Wright?
So, which one came it's correct? So again, your application is to transfer ownership to the homeowners association, correct?
Yes, sir.
But you do understand that the legal record on this. According to this subdivision plaque for the Los Al, it appears to be entitled.
Can I take that back? You said that the, 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 the purpose of the application was to do that. When we were talking to Mr. Hubler, we had asked if it would be possible to just leave the road to the city, but allow us to keep our gates closed.
Right, but that's what I'm trying to clarify. We've talked a lot about the gate. But your application is actually to take ownership of that right away.
Because Mr. Hubler said from his previous knowledge of being, you know, working part of his own, it says, I've never heard of a gated public road. He said, so the only way that you can keep your gates closed is if you, it was Mr. Hubler's recommendation that we do the application exactly how we do it, because that was the only way that he saw we could actually technically keep our gates closed.
I understand that. But your application is not for that. Your application is to take ownership of the public right away.
Yes, sir, so that we can keep the gates closed.
Okay, there's a clear problem with that, because it is city-owned property and it was dedicated as a subdivision. This is the requirement for subdivisions within the city of Espanola and pretty much throughout any community. Is that the subdivision has to get the curb and gutter and all the infrastructure in place and then dedicate it to the municipality. That's typical precedent for subdivisions within the city of Espanola. And that's exactly what happened with this Los Ar, bonus subdivision, which again was signed by Mayor Richard Lucero in November second of two thousand and one. And approved by the city and taking ownership based on this dedication and affidavit. That clearly shows these roads were dedicated to the city of Mexico. And this, this would again was duly recorded in Reariva County, because the property does lie in Reariva County. On the fourth of December two thousand and one, and it's recorded in book one ninety-six, page seventy-five twenty-nine. Which is also instrument number two one seven eight five two. But that is the legal record for this property, and do you understand that?
Yes, yeah, but that's why we decided to sit down with Mr. Hubler and try to do our due diligence to untangle something. We all inherited this issue, including this body, Mr. Hubler, residents of the community, that however this got approved. Because obviously gates should have never been erected in the first place, if that's the way that it was dedicated to the city. And so, yes, I have agreed with you.
Right, so, but this is super, and again, this is just a recommendation. This, this dimension has absolutely no ability to render a decision on whether or not city property is acquired, disposed of, or anything else. I'm just recommending that. But that's one of the problems also in New Mexico, in, in New Mexico constitution, it prohibits governments from donating anything to any private individual or even, even nonprofits. That's the actual component of the New Mexico constitution, I believe. It's not even state law, it's, it's actually the constitution of this state. So that's the problem this commission is gonna have, is that essentially what we're doing is unconstitutional. What you're asking us to do is not allow it to be constitutional to stay in New Mexico. Just to be crystal clear on that, the issue of the gate, I think where you've done with the Knox locks. And that access, it seems like to me, that should satisfy the cities' need for access to that property. But again, that's, that's not the question that's before this planning commission tonight. What's before us is whether or not to transfer ownership of the public street in right of way and all of the city's infrastructure, the water and sewer lines that are in that street in right of way to the homeowners association.
I believe so, sir, we didn't want.
But that, that's what the application is. That's what's before this commission tonight and what we have to make a recommendation on to the governing body. That, and so again, I just wanna be clear with that, that you understood that. That's what the decision this body has to render tonight is a recommendation to, to city council. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Can I specifically in the application where it states that we want the city's?
It's ownership of the property is ownership of what's under the ground. You're not. There's no clarity here, and, and again. It doesn't really matter either way, even if you were to separate the surface, which I don't believe you can from what's under there, there is still city infrastructure there. And the road itself is city infrastructure, and that's required in subdivision. Ordinance of this municipality and many others. Actually, even, even within the counties, that's required in a lot of cases.
So when you have city utilities coming through private properties through the city, you're saying that those utilities, the.
I'm sorry, sir, but those utilities are in the right of way, it was dedicated by this plaque, subdivision plaque. That, that you all, chances are, every deed you have references this plaque and the lot numbers displayed on this plaque.
I'm sorry, I guess what all I'm trying to clarify is that we have no interest in wanting to take the city's utilities. Ownership of city utilities.
That's fine, but it's, it's all or none in this case. That's not what you have, and I'm sorry you're out of order, we'll get a chance to do that, but, Mr. Chair, that's my questions. I have no further. For this, for this avenue, there's still other people to speak here.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Are there any other questions from the commission? I got a couple, and I did just kind of dovetail, I think, from Commissioner Quintana's questions, but to get some clarity. You did say that the gates were non-operational for a period of a year and a half to two years or something like that, Mr. Silver?
About, yeah.
Now, again, as Commissioner Quintana pointed out, when properties are sold. The properties do reference this plaque that clearly states that the roads are dedicated to the public. Now, as a matter of just making sure, why didn't you seek city opinion or city approval prior to investing ten thousand dollars worth of upgrades to the gate system?
We did, Mr. Martinez, my last vice president, Daniel Ortiz, engineer for Windstream. He's actually the guy that does all the engineering here in town, so he's very familiar with utility easements. So I asked him to take this on, he contacted the city whether or not we needed to pull a permit to make these upgrades to the gates, and the exact word that he was given was that it was existing that infrastructure, therefore we did not need to pull a permit. So that, that was as far as you wanted the city. Gates were already, were already there, and if I'm gonna ask Mr. Martinez yourself. You held my position for many years and I have documentation of you collecting funds from the community and actually expediting the exact same, the exact same thing that I did. Did you consult with the city every time you replaced an arm on the gates? Because that's exactly what I did myself. I just put a commercial gate opener on rather than a residential one. So you did the exact same thing I did, just, it was different infrastructure. My question is, did you pull a permit and consult the city every time you're doing this?
So to, to that end, so these are questions for you, Mr. Salazar. So to that end. The, can you explain the differences between the gate system that was there before and how it allowed people in and out versus the changes to the gate system that you made?
The gate system has changed many functionalities through its life from the beginning of two thousand and one. Originally, when the gates were put in, as Mr. Salazar, Victor Salazar said earlier, it was a key that you had to get from Mr. Red Ball. Then Mr. Derek Curry, who was, who was also in, in, in attendance at the very beginning, when there was very few homes in the community, there were clickers. But that was very short-lived. As the community started to scale out, the system that was put in place was a loop detector. Which then, no, any car that drove up and got close enough to the gate, the gate would open on its own. which then, no, any car that drove up and got close enough to the gate, the gate would open on its own. And that was the function that it stayed in from whatever time in the early two thousands up until twenty nineteen, when we then put in a cracker system and a keypad.
Okay, so, so. That the the changes in the system. So is it correct to say that the changes in the system, and I think, uh, Director Hussein touched on this, is that the gate system prior was a passive system with the loop detectors for any vehicle could access to, you know, garbage truck, a fire engine, uh, a visitor, whatever, uh, but with the changes that you made, it's now a restricted gate system where you actually have a, have to have a passcode to enter, is that correct?
It is not a restricted system right now. Um, it has not been ever because Mr. Hubler did not allow us to close the gates. Since we made the change and the city communicated with us, uh, as I said, all parties have been notified, signed off, and provided a code to enter the community as needed. Um, so it's, it's still a passive system, but that's it right now. Uh, the code is listed right there under the keypad, anybody can, I could even get it. So it's still passive. It's never been, if now, our goal through this process is to take back the road and make it where we restrict access. Um, but today, it's never been a, a restricting system.
But that was the original intent, is that correct?
That's the reason for gated community, Mr. Martinez.
Okay, thank you. Um. Next question, I, I know you mentioned that, uh, you didn't have the, the numbers tallied, but it looks like there's twenty. According to the plat, there's twenty lots within the subdivision. Can you give us an estimate of how many were in favor of uh, of the road being privatized to the association and to the residents?
Hi, Mr. Martinez, you took this a whole lot half years ago. Um, I'm looking for. Having my back, like, I'd have to refer to giving another Mr. Martinez, because I'd be pulling it out of the, out of thin air. If I could give you an estimate, it was probably upwards of eighty percent, because I, I, most of the things that we voted, that's been the consensus. Um, there's usually always one no, one property, maybe two that say no, and we've always had one or two properties that were threatened for voting for various reasons, so I'd like to give you an estimate, it'd probably be about seventy-five percent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Salver. Uh, next, um. If there's no further questions from the commission, uh, Director Hussein, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I, I don't have a question, I just want to clarify something that I did mention to you, since I said that they, they installed the gate, means that subdivision. And I did want to clarify that I did say that it was already there since the subdivision was established.
Yes, sir.
And again, the, the, my statement about the, the restriction of the gate, that the regional plan that you had to install the commercials scale gate or conscious scale operational, or was for restricted access. That's, that's what I was mentioning, that, that's, that's why it was changed with the. Yes. That's a.
Anything else, Director?
That's it, sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now, is there any neighboring property owners, uh, that received notice who have any questions for Mr. Salver? Again, any neighboring property owners who received notice to have questions for Mr. Salver?
There's no one in the audience, so you can find out, there's a chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
All right.
I appreciate your help with. Appreciate your help with that, by the way, Commissioner. All right, we'll move on to, uh, thank you, Mr. Salver, you can have a seat now. So we'll move on to, um, any presentations, either proponents or opponents to the requests from neighboring property owners. I know there's several, uh, in the audience. Uh, so we'd like to, um, make sure that any of your testimony, your presentation is not redundant to the testimony that you already heard. If you have any new things to share or would like to present to the commission, um, you may approach the podium. Identify yourself with your name, please, and, and, uh. And proceed.
My name is Nathan Ortiz, I live at one zero one Los Albos, uh, Commissioner Wright, uh, V Hill, Kitana, uh, Mrs. Martinez, and, uh, Mr. Salves, um. I have more of just a comment. Um, this started when I moved in there in twenty thirteen into twenty twelve. Um. The first time I bought my house, Ford told me that it was a gated community private road. Took their word for it, the gates were not operable at the time, I, uh, knew Mr. Martinez, uh, Eric Martinez, talked to him, welcomed me to the community. He also told me that the gates were gonna be fixed. If he had lots of problems with them, they'd be fixed and they'd be closed. Main reason I bought there. Another thing is, as the homelessness problem in this city and the, the drug problem and the crime problem in the city and, you know, the governing body, as well as you guys wanting to bring, you know, businesses and people into the city. You know, we're a community trying to, uh, sort of give a facelift on our community. You go in there, everybody has good jobs, everybody's all respected, everybody has nice cars, we'll take care of our homes. We just want to protect what's ours. As for utility lines, there's such thing called an easement. We don't, there's, there's public utility lines and lots of private property with easement. As, as Michael stated earlier, our first thing was just close the gates and leave it as is, what we've been recommended by your last director to go this route. So we're doing what we're recommended by you, by your directors. Not necessarily you, but by your directors, your past director, maybe not this director. You know, back when my wife was a council lady, she sat down, she, I was the president at the time, so I asked her to do the research. She researched it. We went to this, you know, she went straight to the streets director, streets director came, I have the email saying it's private street, Mr. Ortiz. Yes, do what you want with it. Great. We all moved forward, thinking it was a private street. We don't always go and pull out a plat and see, when you buy a home, they give you, they, they give you a big plat of your property and they give you an eight by ten of the whole subdivision. How are you gonna read that stuff in an eight by ten? We're excited to buy our homes, we're excited to get in there. You missed a few things. You know, I'm here tonight to ask you guys, please, whether you guys keep the road, let us close our gates, protect ourselves, protect our community. We've done the proper things with the emergency companies, police departments, UPS, the utility departments. All the departments that need entrance into there, we're willing to give access. What we're trying to do is keep unwanted people from going in there. This is a dead-end street. It's not a cross-through street, like, let's say Valley Drive. Valley Drive, I wanted to put gates many years ago, but it's a cross-through street. I understand that. Ours is a very small community. It's a loop. It's essentially a dead end. It's just a circle, a small circle. I've been there since twenty thirteen, I have not seen a, a city street sweeper there, ever. I have never seen a snowplow truck there, ever. I've never seen a patching crew there, ever. When our entrance had concrete and it got messed up, we, as a community, put money together to repair it. But, you know, the city has bigger fish to fry, more roads to be worried about to take care of. They don't even have the money to keep, you know, lower street. North McCurdy, terrible, hollers, everything, everything. Still working on, on the other subdivision too, that's sinking, that road. I mean, supposedly there's money there. How many years has that been gone? We as a community are willing to take that over. Give you guys all the easements you need for your utilities, for whatever you guys need. I think, um, Michael's gone way beyond for, you know, all the emergency vehicles. You know, things have really, and we want to take care of it, and, you know, I'm hoping you guys give, you know, the recommendation to pass this so that we can keep our community safe. I mean, I welcome you guys all to go, take a drive to there. Look at our, look at our community. It's probably one of the nicest in city of Escondido. And that's the way we want to keep it. We have elderly, we have retired people. You know, we've had, we've had people come knock on people's doors in the middle of the night to call police. I had someone uh, try to break into my home with my wife and my children, all alone. We want to keep these people out and it detours people. It doesn't stop track, but those gates detour these bad people from going into our community. So I hope with that, you guys consider letting us keep our gates closed. We're not keeping out city, we're keeping out unwanted people. Like I said, it's not a passage to, can't get to El Gano from there, can't get from Riverside to Lucas. It's a circle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you, um, any, uh, questions for Mr. Ortiz from the commission?
Mr. Chair, may I go?
Yes, Commissioner Kipana, please.
Um. What I'm drawing from these discussions, I completely understand the basis of this discussion on several levels. When all of you purchased the property, you were of the understanding incorrectly, unfortunately, that this was a private road. And I think I've tried to clarify that whether it's private or public, your anticipation was that you'd have a gated community, which on the premise or on that basis would provide you additional security. I don't think that there's any argument whatsoever that most people, especially when they have invested fair enough money in something, want to live safely and want their properties protected. Unfortunately, in our society, whether it's in Escondido or Mexico or anywhere else, we do have people that don't respect other people's properties. So I do want you to know that I understand that portion of the argument. Now, you cannot argue that because you didn't understand that it was a public road, uh, uh, public or private road, it is clearly recorded and documented. But my question to you then is because the city's attorney seems to think, or is a, has stated an opinion that this is a public street and therefore an asset to the city and cannot be donated back, and you can only answer if you guys have had this discussion, maybe Commissioner Wright can tell me if this is the practice they can have it. Have you as a community entered into the idea of buying the road from the city?
Um, no, we haven't. We, we haven't done that. But, but for your, your, you know, like I said, when you buy any property, you're getting a big plat of your home in your property bonds. For the whole community, I think they gave us an eight by ten. Okay, so that, I'll admit, that was a mistake my part that I didn't get my fine class and read the small plate print. Okay, but I had trust with the current, at that time, the current president, Mr. Martinez up there. Who, the gates to guarantee me they're gonna work. Okay, so, and then the, the person I bought the home from said it was a private road. I believed it, my mistake. I'll admit to that. You know, if there was another way to, you guys can keep your road and we could close our gates like other cities, like Albuquerque, but Ollie, 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 Ratchell, you know, why are we always three steps behind every other community in the state? There. They do it all over the state of New Mexico. Why can't we? Like I said, if it was a through-and-through road, I could understand this completely. It is not. It is now, in your home, twenty bones, there's twenty bones there. It's a small circle. I'm sure you guys are familiar with it. We all have small children, well, most of us have small children, if not, we have, they have grandchildren. Our kids still ride out on bikes, they play basketball on the streets. With those gates open, we would have people just come off a current road, joyride around, because they're running from police, hide in the corner, and leave. Was it tip-toe safe for my children? Now, since we've had these gates that are semi, semi-operational.
Commissioner Kipana.
That is.
Commissioner Kipana, did your?
Uh, no, my question didn't get answered, uh.
For buying? No, we haven't, we haven't.
Discussing, so I, I guess I should close the question by asking, is that something that you guys would be willing to look into?
That would have to be discussed with the community. I, I can't answer that. There's nineteen other members, I, I. You know.
And Commissioner Wright, I don't even know if that's an option.
Uh, I believe, Mr. Kipana, um, it could be transferred, but transfers like that, um. I might get myself in trouble with the attorneys in the room, but, uh, I think that requires a stable finance approval. Uh, for any governmental entity to transfer to sell, to sell an asset that they have. It's possible, but I do believe it takes four to finance approval for that.
Sure, and, and I, I do not incline that it's an easy road. I was just seeing if there was another solution.
Would be willing to pay for it.
I, I would.
So one more question, and this is for the whole governing body. The whole governing body. So we've been here before with vast free recommendation, and this is what's gotten us.
Each.
So.
We're at a point. This is a question from the commission, so.
Okay.
Really, that's where we are. Your testimony concluded. And now it's time.
I think.
You actually went to sit down.
She has a question.
And we're in that point of cross-examination. I realize it's cause I judicial studies.
So I have one simple question for you, this. What is your recommendation for us?
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Are there any other questions from the commission?
Simple. We'll do what needs to be done. What do we need to do so that we don't have to?
The Chair, I have a question.
Commissioner V Hill has a question, Commissioner V Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, uh, fellow commissioners. My question is, uh, and, and, and first, I want, I want to, I want to let you know that this dedication and affidavit that was signed by the Royballs, uh, they're, they're not dedicating, they're not dedicating to the city alone, they're dedicating to the public. How do you guys plan to approach the public to vacate that, uh, that road as an easement, as a public easement?
I couldn't answer it, uh, on that, that's why we come to you guys. That's what you guys are, are, are put on the board to help your constituents.
Good. And again, this is a personal concern to everyone. This is why we're in voting, but we have no authority to make this decision. This is city property. Every one of us since you're is volunteer.
Thank you.
And.
Thank you, Chair.
This has to go to the committee.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I do believe there is a solution to that, which we will come to that. I just wanted to see if he, if he had an idea of how to go about that. And if he did have a good, an idea of how to go, go about that, we, we could have, you know, probably enhanced on that and maybe come to a really, really good solution that is, uh, didn't have any, any, um, I guess, uh, blockage, uh, to get this thing done, but I believe there is a way to do it, and I'll recommend that again, uh, as we go on in the, with the meeting. Uh, but I do also want to, uh, pick the director's brain concerning that same question. I didn't mean to offend anybody, and, uh, and I would appreciate it if, uh, you didn't try to offend in, in this commission, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner V Hill. Are there any other ques- questions for Mr. Ortiz from the commission? I'm sorry?
That's not a very. We can go to the next.
Thank you.
I'll be your.
Uh. Director, uh, Director Hussein, do you have any questions for the neighboring property owner? Does the applicant have any questions for the neighboring property owner?
No.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on to the next, uh, neighboring property owner who received notice. Uh, can you state your, your name, please, for us?
Could you say your name, sir? Hello, I'm C Phil, my assistant, and, uh, I was previously president of Your colleagues down the street. And, uh. I'd, I'd like to explain something to you. This, this, uh. This, these papers. Have Amazon in it. In, okay? And what happened was, the guy was supposed to deliver. A pair of headphones to our house. Excuse me, I, I'm eighty-two years old and, and, uh, I. I, I, I tend to go off. Off on a tangent once in a while. So, anyway, um. Amazon called me. On the afternoon of. Hmm, the twenty-seventh. And he said, he said that. He wasn't able to deliver my package to me. And I thought, what the dickens? Uh, I, I, we had heard from, uh, your. Previous planning director that, uh. That, um. The accounts. Should not suffer. Appreciably. And that, um. Packages would be delivered. Well. Uh, he, uh, the, the fellow who's, um. Supposed to deliver the package on, uh, on the early afternoon of, uh. Of the twenty-seventh, he. Called me and he said, hey, uh, we're sorry, uh, we can't deliver the package. And I immediately called Amazon and, uh, and, uh. I got back. A letter saying. That I solved your problem. That they, they are very interested in. In making certain that, uh, you're receiving a package. And, uh. So anyway, uh, the, the individual told me. On the afternoon of, uh. Early afternoon of the twenty-seventh of February, that. He or she would. Reimburse my bank account, and there it is. A hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-three cents. Now, uh, I, I need to ask you, who among you, uh, is prepared to receive for the city? This document. Because. Sure enough. Uh, Amazon. Returned the hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-three cents. Absolutely. And so that pleased me a great deal. And then there was this meeting coming up. And I thought. Why is? The fellow. Has been. To deliver my package. Why? Why is it? I never spoke to him. All I got was a text message on the. Telephone. We could ask him. We could ask him. But I think, I think. I'm getting ahead of the game. It's the question of undesirables. Who is not desirable in the? Community. Who is not? And so. You want to? Pass on a recommendation to the city that is, uh. Is terrible. Is terrible. You can pass on. A recommendation to the city. To keep. For people out. Drunks out. Mexicans out. I'm particularly concerned about. The, the class of people that we are creating. Okay? Sure, we, we can, we can, uh, create. A class of people in Espinola. You know. Espinola is full of poor people. You know, do any of you have? Any riches to speak of? No, no. Uh, you know, I'm a Bensoner. Living in this community. And, uh. I mentioned to you. I was president at the community college. As a matter of fact. We're publishing a book. A history book about the. College. And it says that we are all one community. I'm sorry. I've probably gone on too long.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Maestus. You can hold on. I will, uh, we might have some questions for you. Are there any questions, uh, for Mr. Maestus from the commission?
Sure.
Being none, hearing none. Are there any questions from staff, Director Hussein?
We don't have any.
And does the applicant have any questions for Mr. Maestus?
Oh, sir.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other neighboring property owners who received notice that would like to speak at this time? Commissioner Wright.
Yes, we have a gentleman who would like to, Mr. Chair. Robert, do you have anybody on the Zoom?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, so my name is Ben Lopez and one of the residents, ten sixteen Osadulis. Um, thank you to the commission for setting the time aside to talk about this a little bit to hear, uh, our request. So I think my presentation that I focus on is, uh, we're one of the families that has many kids. My wife and I, we've got five children that we've been raising. They're in Osadulis. And, uh, one of the noisy houses in the neighborhood and ten grand neighbors for bearing with us. Yeah, but, uh, I, I can say we moved in in two thousand and four. We were one of the early families. That moved in when most of those lots were dirt. Um, and I'm also one of the residents who failed to pay attention to some of the fine print that was in some of those plats, because when, when we applied, uh. I, 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 I received a version of the plat that was just like a, uh, eight and a half by eleven in one of the packets you can imagine, but still. Uh, it's certainly there, so I acknowledge that. But I'd probably say thank you to, to the commission. I've heard some comments like Commissioner Quintana. That you guys understand the safety. Everybody wants safety in their neighborhoods, and you guys get it. So I acknowledge that and I, and I, and I appreciate it. I will add the data point that from the time we moved in in two thousand and four, when we were a smaller family. Uh, the developer did leave me with the impression that this is going to be a private road. And I failed to do the homework to, to fact-check him. Uh, I, I trusted him. Uh, so very disappointing. And there was a couple other disappointments, a couple of things that the developer promised us, but the idea was that this would be a community that would be very safe for families. There would be a playground, all this stuff. Uh, but safety was one of them. I will say that it didn't really catch my attention probably between two thousand and four and about two thousand and fifteen. Uh, we didn't seem to have a lot of, you know, it's like the squeaky wheel, um. Uh, we didn't notice that many problems. Like, we felt very comfortable leaving our little children to go around the circle at the time. Uh, but from about twenty fifteen-ish till about now, things have changed. They're different. Uh, and I can tell you that, uh, we've had a huge escalation of a lot of us with these break-ins in the vehicles. Uh, with, uh, uh, our cams catching, uh, folks trying to break in. Sometimes when we, the husbands are not around and our wives are home, and I can tell you that, you can imagine how I react when, when. The community is very conscientious about sending an email out and somebody attempted something. On one of the properties, and in particular during the summertime, I can tell you that we absolutely the transient, uh, concern. And, uh, I'm certainly open to. My only problem is anyone who has criminal intent. That's my problem. Anybody else, they could come by and say hi if they like. We'll offer them one of them. But there has been a high level of folks up to no good, and, uh, it's risen in the recent years. Um. And I think our main intention, if nothing else, I'd really like to feel safer. And from the time that there was this temporary arrangement to, to, where there's still public access, but you have to put the code, you have to read the numbers. Uh, the decline has been awesome. I mean, in terms of, we felt a lot safer. But I think the general statement from our family would be, uh. From the twenty fifteen timeframe, we feel a lot less safe. And if it's the evenings, I don't let them out. That, that's how much has happened. I won't let them out on the street when it starts getting dark. Uh, we've had enough problems that I really worry, and I, I've become increasingly worried when I go to work and my wife, she's, she's. She does the hardest job, right? It's the homemaker and raising the kids, but I worry for her safety, and my, that concern has been going up since that timeframe. Definitely worried. Uh, don't want to be put into a difficult situation if someone comes around trying to cause trouble. City of Espinola Police have been great in terms of when we reach out, they say we'll try to do courtesy. But, uh, it, it's difficult for them to consistently do that sort of thing. So I just wanted to put that data point out there, and I appreciate everybody's consideration to the degree that your recommendation can include. This very real concern for, for raising little kids there and, and our family members when we go off to work. And that's it. That's my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Um, is there any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
I might have one tomorrow, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Wright, uh, fellow commissioners. The, the question I have is, is, is kind of off the wall. And, uh, do you order, uh, from Amazon or from the internet at all? Do, do they, do they bring in, um. Uh, your, your, uh, your items to readily? I, do you get what you order, in other words?
Yeah, I, I'd be embarrassed to admit how much you do it. I'll just say a lot. We get a lot of packages.
Yeah. Okay. So, so really, there's not, there's not a, an issue with it for you as far as that goes?
An issue in terms of packages making it to the house?
Correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, no, no problems there. I, I think, uh, the, 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 the folks that support the community, mail, whether it's the mail folks, delivery folks. Uh, law enforcement, we've seen that their access is pretty easy. We have not really seen many issues. I, I think that flow has seemed pretty good from my perspective.
Okay, good. I have one more question that you may, may not be able to, to answer, and that is concerning law enforcement. Uh, and, and, uh, well, emergency vehicle access. Do you think that they would be willing? Or, or, or just as willing to enter a private road in the case of, uh, an emergency?
Well, my impression would be that probably wouldn't be a problem. Uh, certainly, we'd have to ask them, but, uh. But, uh, we've had. That, it seems like normal activity, right? Anytime the police want to come by or they do a courtesy call, we need to come in the community to, from my perspective, it seems like no problem. It hasn't been an issue. Uh, we haven't had any fighters, thank God. Uh, in the community, but I would imagine that. I couldn't envision that being a, a, a realistic problem. I, I, I think that would be a problem, but that's my opinion.
Outstanding, sir. Thank you for your, for your, for your candor. And that's all I have. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner V. Hill, are there any other questions from the commission?
Not really a question, Mr. Chair. Just got a clarification. This commission was in the same boat. We got presented this to try and read that plat. Eight and a half by eleven, and that's why these things showed up, because that is totally illegal, uh, just for the record. So appreciate staff give that, that helps, but that's one of the problems we're dealing with, is that dedication. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any, uh, questions from staff? Are there any, uh, questions to Mr. Lopez from the applicant?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you.
I'm Victor Salazar. I'm Victor Salazar. And, uh, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, like for, uh, trick or treat and stuff like that, we open the gates. And we allow all the cars to come around. So it's not like we just, uh, shut the whole city off, you know? So we do do that. And we, uh, we decorate our, our yards and everything with falitas and everything so people can drive around and see it. So we welcome people to come in. It's not like we, we, uh, lock the gates, you know, we open it up so all the kids can drive around. So that's all, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar. Any, uh, questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, I might have one.
Commissioner V. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Salazar, if it does become a private road. Would you then reconsider closing the gates for Halloween, uh, closing the gates for, uh. For the, uh, decorations during the holidays, uh. Would you then do that? And I ask this question because you would then, the, the homeowners association. Would have that, that power to vote on doing so. Uh, would you vote on doing so, or, or do you think anybody else would vote on doing so?
I would have to say my wife enjoys Halloween so much that she would have to have the gates open. She does, she loves it.
Yeah.
I don't think that we, we would ever, uh, close the people out.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you very much. The things running through my head are as if it became a, yeah, a gated community. Uh, to the point where, where, uh, I mean, it would become so exclusive, nobody would be ga- getting, be able to get in there unless you were invited. Uh, or had a, a clicker to open up the gate. It, uh. Truly sort of the makings of a really interesting, a possibly a really interesting scientific, uh, sci-fi movie or novel or something. But, uh, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? Any questions from staff? Any questions on the applicant?
I'll say it.
Are there any other neighboring property owners who would like to speak?
Uh, my name is Juanita Lopez and I'm the spouse of Ben. Um. We have lived there eighteen years. Um, I'm a stay-at-home mom. I've always been able to stay at home. Um, I just wanted to say that. When we moved in, knowing that it was a gated community. when we moved in, knowing that it was a gated community, the first thing that popped into our head is safety. I, I enjoy staying home. I enjoy knowing that when the gates are closed or, but I can walk around or we can have the kids, you know, go out, ride their bike. And I'm not really concerned about, you know, somebody coming in. I do want to say that, yes, we do need to, with, with all the incidences that have happened, we are a little concerned of letting the kids go out or, you know, or even answering the, the door. I don't want to have to feel that, you know, I can't answer the door, I can't let the kids go out or whatever. It's, it's, the, the, the issue for us is the safety of our family. But I, I can probably speak for, maybe not, but maybe I can speak for all the mamas that stay home there as well. We could probably say, I can probably speak for them, is that one thing that we do enjoy is staying, when we, when we do get to stay home, that we are safe. And so if we have those gates closed or we have it to ourselves, we do whatever we need to do with that. Then we can continue to, to feel that way, right? Now, that's, there's another thing that I was going to say about the Halloween. I don't think we've ever stopped anybody from coming in on Halloween or the, what you said, VR sales, VR sales. We haven't opened. It's open to the public. And it's because, you know, we, we want that, we, we, you know, we will do it that, you know, that or whatever. But otherwise, we want to be able to kind of keep that closed. And invite whoever we need to come in. But, you know, I'd like for you guys to at least sit there and see if there's one mom or actually, there's actually how many mamas are there that have kids there? I think we pretty much have a full, full house of children. So just wanted to just say that. And please consider saying something, hey, you know what, we've got mamas staying home there. We've got kids, we still have babies that are growing up there. And so safety and wanting to keep our family safe. So that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Does anybody have a question? Lopez, is there any questions for the commission? Seeing none, hearing none. Director Hussein, any questions?
We don't have.
Director, okay. And does the applicant have any questions for Mr. Lopez?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Are there any other neighboring property owners who wish to speak? Can you confirm, Commissioner Wright? Nobody?
No one. As a neighboring property owner.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. All right. Is there any members of the general public who would like to, who did not receive notice, who would like to speak on this issue? Not seeing any approach. The podium? Thank you. All right. Now, this is the opportunity for the applicant to make any brief final comments or for the commission to ask the applicant any final questions. Mr. Salazar, do you have any brief final comments to share?
I do not. Just want to thank everyone for their time. As, as you said, I didn't realize you guys were volunteering money. And we, we thank you for taking, you know, almost, you know, two and a half, two hours and fifteen minutes of your time. We take you for consideration, no matter the outcome. We are a community, as I think the majority of people have said, that we truly want to uplift our community. We want to be someone who is an example for the rest of the community. I myself still serve part-time National Guard. I know I've been, but I've been on my leave for a couple of months. And, you know, I, I left my town. I came home because I truly want to make a difference. I've worked really hard and I take pride in where I live and the people that I live by and serve with. And I truly, truly feel this whole entire thing was a misunderstanding. And I agree with Mr. Vigo in his statement earlier, how the developer and the surveyor missed this and put us all in this unfortunate situation is a bummer on all of us. We were all misled as purchasers of homes in this community. If, if we would have known that it wasn't a gated community, maybe some of us would have bought, maybe some of us wouldn't have. But we find ourselves in this situation. And we just thank you for your time, no matter the outcome. We would really appreciate a recommendation to allow us to take the road back. If that does not seem feasible for legality reasons, because you cannot donate it, we would like alternate consideration, for you to possibly allow us to keep the gates closed in some type of fashion, if you guys decide to keep the road. And so with that, that's, those are the two major considerations I'd ask. And again, thank you for all your time. Any last questions?
Any final questions from the commission?
Commissioner. I, I have maybe.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll, I'll. Are you sure? Thank you, Commissioner Quintana. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Salazar. There's just a couple of questions I have that you might be able to answer that. I mean, I'm as a representative of the homeowners association or even the president of the homeowners association at this time. You had mentioned that there wasn't a signed road maintenance agreement by the homeowners?
No, sir. When we originally started talking to Mr. Hopper, yeah, those signed. Although, whenever, in the pact that I believe, we did get a company to come out of Albuquerque to give us a quote of basically the cost that we would incur if we took it back. And that was part of the vote for us to try to pick it back as private. So I wouldn't call it a signed agreement, but people got the opportunity to vote on whether or not they wanted to incur that cost.
Would the community, in your opinion, be willing to sign a road maintenance agreement?
Amongst ourselves or with the city?
Not only road maintenance. No, with your, amongst yourselves. If, if this road reverts to the homeowners association, then you guys will be responsible for its upkeep and its sharing. So it'll not only be a, a road maintenance agreement, it'll be a sharing agreement also.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So also, from, from, from bringing this to the commission and hoping that, that it is recommended that the road does revert back to, or that the road reverts to the, the homeowners association. You would be agreeing to vacating the public road easement and dedicating the road easement to the homeowners association. In which case, the, the road maintenance and shared use agreement would, would kick in. You guys would be solely responsible for that. Now, that doesn't include the, the utility easement. That utility easement would have to stay intact and that utility easement would be dedicated to the city. And again, you would probably have to rededicate that to the city, the, for, for the underground sewer, whatever, whatever other utilities are in there. The plant was signed by several people. Utilities, I believe it was. Thought I'd seen a signature line for a bunch of, bunch of utilities. And I did, yeah, it's, it's signed by GTE. At the time, it was GTE by HEMAS, by Public Service and by the Espanola Cable Vision. And two of these no longer exist. But they, they would have to be signed off again for that purpose. And again, again, this is my, my, my thinking, that it may have to be surveyed again as an easement for dedication, okay? And again, the dedication would be an easement for utilities and utilities only. It's, it's going to be a drawn-out process to get this dedicated as a private road. We can't just say, yeah, let's give it to them as a private road. We recommend it. And, and, and I'm hoping that the, the city doesn't say, yeah, okay, we got the power to do that. When in fact, it's dedicated to the public. The public has the right to go in through there. And I, and I posed the question again, how can it be vacated with the public? And the answer to that was, was, I don't know, that's your job, you know, but really, how can it be dedicated, I mean, I mean, vacated so that the public realizes that, that it no longer is a, 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 a public road? The only way I can think of is if you post it in the paper, so the public has notice and they, they, they have no excuse, basically. Give it a timeframe, maybe thirty days, and then go forward. That would be part of a condition to, to getting this thing privatized. And again, this is probably a question for the director, if he knows if that is the process of doing this. Otherwise, I think that I think that that's all I have, Mr. Salazar. What do you think?
Well, thank you for your time and, and, and I completely agree, you know, we got to do the due process. We know we've already come this far in the process, as far as notifying the community or the, the public that they are going to give up an asset. Unfortunately, I don't think the public is even aware that they have this asset this entire time. But still does not mean that they should be given the opportunity to know that they have this asset and they might possibly be giving it up.
Okay. All right. I think this meeting was, was posted and it was also posted in the paper. And I think that the public has been notified as far as what the intent is for this road, whether it's going to be remain public or not. And I think that that's maybe part of the process. We will have to discuss that with the, with the director to see what he thinks. And it may, and it may serve as that public notice. But either way, again, someone, one of the, one of the commissioners had mentioned what kind of counsel you would receive. And you had mentioned reviewing some of the gated community bylaws in Tisukí. One of the things that I would recommend is that, and again, it would be, be a, a condition is that you do seek legal counsel on this to, to realize what, what, what can we do? How can we do this? And can they draw up the necessary documents in order to dedicate the easement as well as, as well as to the, to the, to the city utilities, as well as have the city dedicate this road, this easement to the homeowners association? If that's, you know, food for thought, great. I hope you mulled it over, as it is, would be a condition. Hopefully, a condition that we can work with, that, that, that this, this commission can impose. I think that's all I have. And if that's all you have, Mr. Salazar, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Vigo.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Vigo. Are there any questions, Commissioner Quintana?
Yes, Mr. Salazar. Because we have an opinion from the land use attorney about it being a public, shall I say, city-owned property. And maybe this director, Mohammed, could also chime in on this. I would, I would really like to see you guys open to the idea to do the research and have an open conversation about purchasing. In that sense, I believe the city can sell their own properties. Would that not be right?
City could definitely sell that property.
Okay. You know, I can't sit here and tell you. But I, I can't tell you if it's cost-effective or not. But the more that I've heard, the more I'm leaning towards that because it would basically eliminate any conversation or inference of donation. I mean, it's nothing you're paying for. Okay? So I would encourage you all in maybe in a motion that would be a condition to, to do that. I don't know. Because I don't know what the end result would be. But I haven't heard from anybody that has gotten up to speak there. They can think that's an ideal.
I think for that to be something to consider, first off, you know, we'd have to get what the city's idea of, of the purchase price would be. And whether or not, like you said, that would be cost-effective. We're essentially buying something back that was given to the city by the developer, which we brought lots from. So not saying we're close to the idea that that could be a viable solution. I just think it would be very dependent on how much the city would want to sell the property for. If it would be a technicality, where the city's saying, you know, we'll sell it to you for a thousand dollars and, you know, you guys get your road back because we can't donate it to you, we'll write you a check right now for a thousand dollars because we have that in petty cash. But if it's going to be a thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollar expense, then we have to basically go to the governing body, vote on it. And then, you know, even if it goes on a majority vote, you know, we have family members here, myself included, that, you know, incurring the cost of that substantial just might not be viable. And so consciously, I would feel bad putting that even up for a vote to put people in a position where they would be forced to then buy something back. Because the way we work is if, if, if we want to do an extraordinary expense, we vote on it, if it passes, then they have to basically pay us that. And if they don't, then we have to put a lien on their home. And I just do not want to go down that route on such substantial expense.
And I would not encourage you to go down that, that road unless you are fully educated on what that.
What the purchase price would be.
Yeah. Okay, so I was, again, and maybe I'm just.
But I do appreciate you proposing that.
Yeah, yeah. That, that, for all I've heard, that seems to be a solution, if in fact, it truly is doable.
Yeah. Definitely. We, we would definitely be considered that based on the purchase price of, of the property. So not close to the idea. And thank you for proposing that, because it might make it easier in this process.
That's not to say, especially if we have to go through finance authorities and things like that, that it can be many steps. But sometimes we have to do that to accomplish our goals. Thank you, Mr. Chair. No more questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Quintana. Any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, hearing none. It is eight twenty-six. We'll go ahead and close the session for public comment. And now we are, thank you, Mr. Salazar. You may take a seat now. Now we will entertain any, any motions from the commission or any further discussion to, because you asked the question, Commissioner Quintana, about looking for solutions. And I think Commissioner Vigo like Commissioner Wright said, there is a distinct anti-donation clause as part of the New Mexico Constitution. So what that means, and of course, I, I deal with this sort of issue in my line of work as well, is that public property can only be vacated or, or dispensed at fair market value. Now, there are exceptions to that, and, but they're, they're tied to local economic development statutes. But this is not within that realm. So again, just to remind the commission, the request that was noticed here tonight was for the transfer of ownership of a public street, a public right-of-way. So that's the issue at hand. And whether we're going to recommend to the governing body approval, denial, what have you, so. That is, that is our task at hand currently. Any other, any other thoughts or comments, or is there a motion? Commissioner Wright?
Mr. Chair, for discussion purposes, I'll make a motion. Again, this is a recommendation to the governing body regarding case number twenty-two dash two, which is across the transfer of ownership in the street public right-of-way for the residents of the Los Arboles subdivision. Mr. Chair, I would move that we recommend denial of this transfer of ownership under the grounds that it's unconstitutional in the state of Mexico.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. There is a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Uh, there is a motion for denial. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair.
We have a second. Was that you, Vice Chair?
I think he was Commissioner.
We have a, a motion. Commissioner Wright, say that again, please.
Commissioner Vial said something, but I couldn't catch it. I wasn't, wasn't sure if that was a second or not.
I think we have a motion and a second, so we're at a point where we could have discussion. So Commissioner Vial.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, I appreciate, uh, appreciate the floor. Thank you, fellow commissioners. What I was gonna say was I was gonna second the motion, uh, for the sake of discussion. This, this, uh, I have a question for, for, um, for Commissioner Wright and, and, uh. That question is, can we apply a condition to this? That does, uh, take into account. The verification of. It's constitutional, it's constitutional right and value. In other words, can we verify that that is the case, that, uh, because of the constitution, because. Because of, um, the possibility of violating, violating, uh, that. Part of the constitution. Uh, we, we deny this. Uh, how can that be verified? And are you sure? Are you absolutely sure? In other words, that's what I'm asking.
Uh, Commissioner Vial, I, I'll respond and if Commissioner Wright wants to take it further. We do have testimony from Director Hussein. Uh, stating, and in, in his staff report from the city attorney. Saying that. Giving away public right of way is, is not allowed. Um, it doesn't use the word, you know, there's not a constitutional term used, but. Um, you can refer that, refer to that in your, in the staff report.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you very much, Commissioner Wright. That's all, that's all I have for, for this.
Any further discussion?
I would like to explain my motion to the public and, and how we're doing here.
Okay, go, go ahead, Commissioner Wright. Thank you.
So again, there is, I mean, I work for local government as well. I happen to do G I S data and things like that, but I, I can confirm. I don't know this, the actual constitutional site, uh, but there is the anti-donation clause. That's the reason for my recommendation. And I also making this recommendation because. This breaks a precedent within this municipality for subdivisions to. When someone subdivides their land. The city puts an obligation on that developer to get the roads up to speed and to get. The water and sewer services put in there. In order for the city to service. That's a precedent that existed and again, as evidenced by this plan for at least the last twenty-two years in the city. Based on this two thousand and one approval. That's one of my reasons for motion, for this motion is, is there's actually rumor. Of subdivisions coming in and I'm very hesitant to set a precedent that these developers aren't gonna be responsible for doing that. And instead transferring it to us, the taxpayers and residents of the city to do this. City's having a hard enough time putting utilities out to North Prince the day and next years ago. It isn't, that's the reason for doing this, is it's incumbent. Upon these developers, we're gonna make a profit off of selling these lots to all of you. To actually put that infrastructure in the ground for the benefit of the community that there, that. These houses and subdivisions are becoming part of. That being said, that, that's the reason why I made this motion. But I would also encourage you, one of the things, if you were told that you're not allowed to lock, I have lock gates and that's really the basis of this. Which that was the basis of most of your testimony when we started this a couple hours ago. That's the way to address this, is get the city code changed to do that. And come to us, even if, even if the director, I don't care if the previous director or director, interim director who's saying here. Everyone in this town has the right to appeal a decision of the, of the land used to rent. And to this body and then if you're not happy with comes out of this body, which are right away, again, all volunteers. It goes to the city council. Ultimately, the city council is a policymaker here. And again, that's why all we can do is make a recommendation tonight. This body doesn't have authority. We're not the elected officials of this town. Only the governing body in, in the city councils can make. A decision about the disposition of this property. You're still gonna have to go before them. But I would, and, and in terms of what Commissioner Vial was suggesting. I mean, we should make a recommendation along with this recommendation to deny. That, that the city council consider allowing, if it's not allowed under the current code, let's fix the code. To allow private communities with public infrastructure inside it. I mean, that's. That's the real problem here, if I'm not mistaken. And let's do that. I mean, that's one of the things this commission has been dealing with. Is we absolutely understand our zoning code is, is broken. We need to rezone. We get rezoning cases all the night and there's group here patiently waiting. To hear a rezoning for the pattern of this community. And I would all urge all of you to participate in that and. And I would be willing to amend my motion to add something like that is that, is that if. If the problem is a lock gate, that, that the city in this, then again, this planning commission can't do it by itself. But we can recommend that. And we have code changes that we're looking at tonight, as a matter of fact. Uh, to move forward for some of the, the easy fixes that are broken. So with that, I don't know if. If I should amend my motion at this point. Fellow commissioners, but that, that's why I've made this motion at this point and, and if we, if we feel like we need to make a recommendation. I would consider that a friendly amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. You bring up a good point. Um, you know, there's, you know, future development and then there's existing development. And I think even if we could approve this request. What kind of precedent would that set for all the other subdivisions in the city? Gates, Tacoma Vista, Valley Estates, you know, could they see this? Well, that's a sweet deal. The city just gave away property so that you could restrict access. Um, we want that too, you know, and so. You know, what does that look like and, and what precedent does that set? So that, that, that's an interesting. Situation, I think that, I think even if we could approve this. We would put the city in an interesting situation. Now, that being said, um, when. You know, private organizations like HOAs do own, um, private roads. Can an HOA dissolve? Can they cease to function? And then will the city be looked at to say, hey, you know, we can't maintain this anymore. We need to give this back to you so that it could, you know, re- revert back to the public. Uh, to a public right of way for city. Operations and maintenance, so. This brings up a lot of interesting questions, so. There is a motion on the floor in a second. And I'll ask if there's any further discussion. Commissioner Wright noted that he's willing to amend his motion. Would the, I think it was Commissioner Kim Tana, uh, are you in favor of the amended motion? Would, would you restate that, Commissioner Wright, again? Is, is that your, is that still your?
But it, um. So I guess my motion was to recommend denial. For the transfer of ownership. Uh, I would amend that motion. To further recommend that the, that the city allow. Gated communities. Within the city limits. Even if that includes, uh, city-owned property behind the gate. That makes sense to everybody?
I think so, but also consider, Commissioner Wright, that we, within current city code. Gates for the purpose of obstructing public access is not allowed in our code.
So that would be the recommendation is to, is to look at the code. And change the code.
And, and we are making that recommendation to staff?
The current action for the commission has to be forwarded to the governing body. Cause that's, that's the only one who can make this decision for transfer of ownership. And it's, it's their decision. I mean, it's certainly a recommendation that, that I think we look at it. And what I understood from our discussions over the last few months, I realized there's a change of administration. Is that, that a code, to the serious look at a code, fixes and, and fixing the zoning. Is a priority for, has been for this commission, I think, for the current planning staff. I mean, it's, it's something we need to do. So the recommendation would be to make the, yeah, to, to look at code amendments to see if this is something that the governing body would consider. Yeah, that's a policy issue, policy decision for the governing body, uh, for this body. Or any subsequent constitution. We may not be here. We serve as the pleasure of the mayor and the city council, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. So we, we do have a, a motion and a second on the floor. Since you're. Quasi-parliamentarian, I think, still, Commissioner Wright. Um, do we need to vote on that motion as it stands or if we get approval from the? The commissioner who's second in the motion, uh, can we act on that amended motion? Can you clarify that for me?
Yes, I did. I did amend my motion if, if Commissioner Kim Tana or Vial, I think both seconded, were in favor. Then we can consider that as the final.
I recognized. Commissioner Kim Tana as the, the second or. Uh, Commissioner Kim Tana, are you? Good with the revised?
I'm willing to second the revision.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion, commissioners? All right, Director Hussein, take the rope, please.
In favor of the motion?
Commissioner Wright?
In favor of the amended motion?
Commissioner Passados?
In favor of the amended motion?
Commissioner Ms. Morninas?
Uh, I will abstain, Director, for sake of any perceived, um, issues that. The applicant has stated, so, uh, just to keep the, the vote clean, I'll go ahead and abstain on this vote.
Thank you, Chairman. This must have passed.
The motion passes to deny, uh, with some recommendations. Voted unanimously, one, one, uh, with one extension. Thank you all for your attendance here tonight. Um, we have one more case. Uh, I'll go ahead and adjourn for a five-minute recess and catch your breath here a little bit and we will rejoin at. I'll go ahead and adjourn for a five minute recess and catch your breath here a little bit and we will rejoin at eight fifty.
Yes. Yes. All right, well, they go the week. So basically, I'm like now. Take it. Mr. Where are you changing? So you're really such a good way to learn. Yes. I think it's time to begin. Why don't you just wait?
You need a couch. You need a couch in your office. You don't have a tent. You know about the things. Yeah.
The person I'm in with, he can't sleep at work.
Yeah. Very working hours.
Very working hours.
Working hours.
It's the first thing you do in this. One hour, a hundred hours to get the job.
I would actually go to the main hall there. I love it.
I'm taking. They're just seeing. You look so.
Two thousand and seven, you were against eighty. It's just Eric. Oh, okay. Yeah. Who said change the directions? They said.
And then. Oh, yeah. So. And how to. No. It's. So you're. Oh, shit. Yeah. Just possible. And then I still give you this. Yes. Yes. So what do you? Yes, and I love the call of. Yeah. And I started with.
It's not really.
Yeah. Which I already got. Yeah. So I do have.
All right. Do you have? Stories. Stories. Just do that. Most of them were. Most of them are.
A beer. What a beer.
You know, they have the door open too. That's the problem. And you got that right. I don't know. Okay. You know why? There's gonna be a lot of people. Not here. And we're. I didn't watch. Just grab. Or grab some. Or maybe not even. That's what I hear. I mean, you know, you know, we have got. So. Did you get my voice still, Alex? I don't know what I did. About. Many more. I'll also. Demand those. Can can this? We're planning. Now, I don't know. I know. But. And there you have it. Reason. I I want to be covered that way. Right, you say, some of them don't really want. Student. But I I saw a phase like. So so you're using. Those big. See that lovely dish? His was. His was. And all of that. He has. That's what. Condition. Somebody even. Was. I know. Further. That would be. God, like they're destroying gas. That would be. Oh, that is. Yeah. Oh. Well, maybe we hopefully we can talk about. Sure, yeah, I'll call you in class. I'm sorry. No, yeah, I'm sorry. This is this is. I don't think there's nobody. I thought everyone was gonna make this. I was thinking you just gonna give like thirty minutes. Thirty minutes done, it took us three hours and twenty minutes. Well, you know, as you get there, Earl. He brought that up. When I should take. We've been. We don't have that right. That was funny. I just I don't know if. How. Hi, please. Other than. Next.
All right, folks, are we ready to resume?
I think they cut us off again.
Yep.
A background noise.
Director Hussein, can you hear me?
Pretty sharp.
Try try again.
Are we ready to resume, Director?
All right. Are we here, Eric?
Are we ready to resume?
Back where? Sorry, manager. Awesome. We're gonna. I don't want to speak. Maybe. It's okay.
Oh, no, it's totally.
We're waiting for Earl Wright, he'll be in here.
Okay.
I think everybody's here now.
All right, commissioners, let's go ahead and. All this needing back to order. We're on item number seven two. Case number twenty twenty two dash three rezon request, Rio Riba County. On behalf of property owner, request rezon of vacant land at the intersection of Kaiha Sienda and Kaiya Chum Sal. UPC one dash zero four seven dash one two one dash three six four dash zero nine zero. To Central Business District B dash three. The property is currently zoned RM dash P U D residential multifamily. All right, commissioners. We will go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. And commissioners, is there anyone who has had who has a conflict of interest? Or that has had ex parte communication related to this case? All right, seen none, hearing none. We will go ahead and identify and swear in the parties. Director Hussein. We have the parties and the applicant here with us today.
Yes, you.
All right, we will ask that they stand so we can swear in. Can you tell me who who is there representing? Rio Riba County and the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Mr. Proheal, the county attorney, and this is Solazar. And. Mrs. My apologies, Sanchez and and Mr. Lopez, representative of Rio Riba County. I I already appreciate their patience.
All right. All right, well, welcome County Manager Sanchez or Mr. Lopez and Mr. Proheal. If you could raise your right hand and we'll swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth?
Oh, I do.
Yes, I do.
Yes, thank you. And staff is already sworn in, so we don't need to go there. Are there any other parties here for the case, Director?
I don't believe there are any parties here, not in the Zoom either present in the. In the high chamber.
Great, thank you. Okay, Director, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Chairman Martinis and the honorable members of the commission. As for our code, the the notice of public hearing was posted in the Rio Rio event sun fifteen days prior and the agenda was posted accordingly as well. And the notice of public hearing was also posted on the property according to our code and the planning commission requirements. So that this we're bringing this. Rezon request on the request of Rio Riba County on behalf of the owner, which is Tumisa Corporation. And this request is for the two vacant properties as per our zoning code. The UPC one zero four seven one two one three six four zero nine zero. The applicant, which is Rio Riba County, is requesting to rezon this property from multifamily residential to central business district R three. The and this property consists of nine point three seven two acres. And it is. As currently rezoned for the residential purposes. We had our VIP interview meeting and we analyzed this property. This is reasonable request is on their bought Geo one that the county approved a few years ago. To establish a rehabilitation center and nursing facility for the people who went through different surgeries. So that it's a transition place where the people can go through their normal life. And I and I believe that's very important step to work to provide a better services to our community. And this reason would be a step towards the establishment of that. That Geo one that I believe the the county resident approved. But as far as the. Can you do the to the map? So here, you can see the actual boundaries of the properties. Go to the next one. And here we see it is the. How it is zone, it is.
Director.
Jason. Yes, sir.
Can you can you share your screen so we can see?
Yes, sir. We'll share it in there.
Thank you.
So let me see here, this RM Kaiya Chumiso and Kaiya Hasienda, see this yellow dot line? These are the county. This this is the parcel that the county is requesting rezon. Can you give the next slide? This is how it's gonna look like when it is closed rezon. So it will coincide with the BG, which is B two commercial zone and B three. And why B three? Because that's our central district in the the president hospital and according to code hospitals are in B three district. So it is rezoned to any different zone, the zone district, they may have to get conditional. Special use permit that is for five years, or they cannot come back for five years if it's not approved, that will pay down. So which is not a wild option. That's why we recommend it. If they want rezoning, have a rezoning to B three, so it is that's hospital is does not have to go through any other. Any other permits and it would not have any detrimental. Effect on neighboring properties or the residents. But if there is any questions, I stand here for questions.
Thank you, Director. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Director Hussein at this time? I have a a few, just some clarifications, Director, so. On the staff report and on your prior illustration. There are some discrepancies with the acreage on the tract that's proposed for rezoning. Can you clarify that, whether it's seven eleven or nine acres that we're looking at rezoning here?
Yes, it sure is this this there was a discrepancy because of certain. Uh, confusion about what actually it says on our zoning map, but we concluded and we double check and confirm that it is nine point three seven two acres.
Now, the the what's on the screen now showing us proposed B three, is that considered one lot or several lots? How is it surprised?
So as for our record. And what we have, there are two lots. But they have the same UPC, but here is a very interesting thing, man. There are two different lots, they have different UPC addresses because they're that's a unique address for any lot. But I believe that it was approved to a a different. So what we have here, you will see here a survey plaque showing one one parcel. But then we. Have resource again, this. The small lot that you see here with with ROI, with this eight zero seven Kaiya Chumiso, it was divided into three lots. Which is not updated on our zone yet, on our zone or the, I mean, on our record yet. But it was. Divided into three lots and actually at this point it stays at four lots. One big lot and the three small. Quarter of Kaiya Hasienda.
So there's four legal lots of record is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, and I'll ask the county representatives to touch on that as well, just for verification when they're turned, so just a heads up there. It looks like there's a parcel that maybe was originally part of the tract. But that's not included in the rezon. It's currently that RM parcel between B two and the proposed B three, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's a that's a legally owned separate parcel from this one?
Correct.
Okay.
Best part of eight one nine.
I think that's my questions at this time. Are there any other questions from the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wright?
Kind of following up with your questions. It is a little confusing of what what lots were actually considering. And what was? Well, the show on this exhibit, which is the yellow line. That is not the actual area being considered. I mean, it's close, but it's not the lots of legal record.
So. So if there could be some changes, but as for our zoning map and as for address map, the record we have, this is what it shows. But.
Right, but that's showing.
That's why they mentioned the UPC for those lots. And that's what we addressed, that these are the lots with this UPC according to our zoning or address maps, according to our, I can hear requesting rezon for these lots.
And so the records of Rio Riba County assessor. Show that UPC is it is two lots, but it's shown as a fourteen point nine three acre parcel.
That is, they may have a different record, but we are this, they, I mean, they could.
Well, the county's advocates, I'll save that question for.
Okay.
But yeah. It's a little confused. What what lots are actually. Um what what lots are actually concerned, and I think that's critical. Because that affects the rights with these properties.
Right.
So given that we'll get that clarified with further testimony. I also noticed in the B R T reviews. Uh let me find those real quick. I don't know if the applicant aware of the B R T reviews. Let's see. Public works make a regular recommended conditions. That sorts essentially every member of the D R T team asked for conditions. Um including race water, water and fire. Do we have a summary of what those conditions are?
So this condition actually, so this when there is a residential development and a commercial development, their infrastructure could be a little different. Depending on what infrastructure they wanted to develop. I think that that were just to consider for the reason. It would be more effective. Then the infrastructure development and then actually site plan comes to the city. By permission, then we can recommend, okay, if you're putting a hundred bedroom. Hospital or fifty better hospital, you have to come with this sort of size of the base water or water lines. Or you have to have this sort of hydrants that could actually. Supply thirty five or a hundred gallons for for a minute per second. So at this point, I'm not, this was just to make aware. The applicant that this maybe may come up when they bring the site back.
Right, but do we have a summary of those conditions recommended by each city department?
Yes.
Is that available for the record tonight, or is it just these?
Just these D R T notes, that's what we made. But then the packet. Because these are not final, they're subject to change depending on what we bring. Because if this is approved now, they may have a different site plan or different infrastructure, then we have to change those.
Well, that's another question. We don't have a master plan for this development at this point, do we?
We do not, but.
Thank you for that. The other question is, is to take this to be three zoning, why be three?
I I already mentioned because our court said the hospital would be deeper.
And that's the only one the hospitals allowed in?
That is so our central district, there are. But there is some dispensaries and something that I love in other, but the hospitals are pretty good, there is me too.
Okay, um. And then one of the things, this is one of the only near very few areas that I'm looking for my code map now. Of the city that actually has zoning for multi-family residential. And again, as evidenced by that. This rezoning request in and of itself. May may not result in spot zoning. However, we see at the southwest corner of that, there is a parcel of land that's left out. Is that zoning for that parcel the same as what's on the east side? Is that also? Multi-family residential, that's our dash M?
Yes.
So in a way, we have a we have a problem that actually it's not the zoning itself, but the effect of the zoning is creating spot zoning on that parcel.
It potentially occurred, but to my understanding, since the part of the parcel is. It are, if you see here. If in eight one nine, the river not riverside drive, half the parcel is residential, half is commercial. So that's how it is actually there, so.
I understand that.
So if that's if that's.
Result is is we end up with a little pocket. I ain't connected to anywhere else. Do we know the acreage of that little pocket?
I do not. Because that's part of our other parcel, it's not a parcel itself.
Okay, um. And then also what we have to the south. And actually across the street of Kaya Canda. That's all residential zoning, correct? So one of the that's one of my concerns with this reselling is request as well as we're putting one of the most intense uses. Immediately adjacent to residential. One of the things with our zoning is to actually allow. Its purposes transitional land use in the overall concept of the city of Espinola zoning. But I'm looking at this. So this is taking the ball, this proposal is gonna take the ball. Of multi-family residential zoning in the city and and take that away.
I.
The only other places I see this is just south of there. Along. Via the Norte or be in Norte. That area, can is there any way we can pull up the city zoning map?
I'm trying, we're having a lot of internet connectivity issues.
I'm sorry, I have to circulate for the commissions to see there's a small track. On the west side off of off industrial Boulevard. Just up the street from the county complex. That's the only multi-family zoning.
I personally agree with you, but to to answer your question. Our zoning has not been updated since almost a few decades. And we should have. Brought some misuse and multi-family zoning to our city. We have actually targeted different. Usals, different areas, we should read our planning reason. Actually, the applicant is the owner of the property, I would not disclose. But we have some housing projects. That are in line. And they have to 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 get reason to, but.
I'll correct that with the advocate, but I don't believe we're a great, but county is taking title to this property. But well, is that with the.
Right, but I mean, our zoning needs to be updated. It was zoned, I think, about thirty forty years ago.
Right, and I understand that in total agreement with you, but my question is, this is one of the only areas. With multi-family zoning, that's all I needed to hear. Thank you. Uh that's the end of my questions, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Uh any other questions from the commission? Okay, seen on here none. We'll ask the applicant, anybody from Rio River County at this time, have any questions for staff? This is your opportunity to cross-examine staff on their testimony. After this, you'll be allowed to present your case as the applicant, but for now, any any questions for staff?
No, Chairman Martinez.
Thank you. And. There doesn't seem to be any neighboring property owners there at this time, Director?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right.
Great, the general public, we'll get to that. Just clarifying, who is here, Mr. Chair in the audience?
Okay, do we have a member of the general public here?
Uh yes, two members. You both want to speak?
Okay. Just remember, there's there's an opportunity for members of the general public to to uh. To present later in in this process, so we'll we'll get there soon. All right, for now, we'll have the applicant present if you could state your name and and go ahead and get started.
Thank you, Chairman. And Honorable Planning Commission, this is Don Trujillo, and I am the county attorney. For Rio Arriba County. And this application came about as a result of. The general election in two thousand nineteen, the voters of Rio Arriba County overwhelmingly approved a general obligation bond in the amount of twelve million dollars. For the construction of a skilled nursing and rehabilitation facility. So I'll first start off by noting that. That the project, a skilled nursing and rehabilitation facility, which was designed to replace. The loss of the hacienda salud when it when it closed and did not reopen. And the owner's place has non-compete clause preventing it from ever being used as a nursing home in the future. Uh that general obligation bond strictly binds the county towards expenditures that are specific to that project. In other words, there is no other project that the county could legally use those funds for other than for the. Uh anything that's specifically related to the skilled nursing and rehabilitation facility. Uh so that was approved in in two thousand nineteen. And since then, the county has been slowly but surely moving this project forward. And had identified these vacant tracts of land. Uh as potential viable sites for the skilled nursing and rehabilitation facility. Uh to that end, the county approached the actually, I think, the contract for an appraisal report. Of those specific pieces of property and then began negotiations. Uh at the formal recommendation of the county commission with the landowners. Uh the county commission, the county manager and county's municipal advisor, as well as project coordinator. Engaged in those negotiations with the landowner. And had settled on sort of preliminary terms for. Uh the potential acquisition of these pieces of land for the purpose of locating the skilled nursing and rehabilitation facility there. And of course. Upon upon entering into those negotiations, it was discussed that in order for this project to move forward in a meaningful way. Uh the county would, the zoning for that particular piece of property would have to be changed. And so the county sought the approval of the owner, which is the Chumisa Corporation. And the Chumisa Corporation granted authority for the county to submit this application for a rezone. For this particular piece of property at the recommendation of Director Hussein. The county saw a B three zoning reason and saw a a rezone to be three. Uh for the explanation that B three was the only zoning designation in the city. That supported or at least specifically mentioned a hospital as a viable or permitted use. Uh the county did think that ROI was appropriate, but of course, and you look at the at the code, which is understandably not been updated for a significant period of time. ROI did not include anything that could be reasonably interpreted to be a hospital. Uh so the proposed use is a B three. And and that is what the county and the seller are requesting from the city. Is that that those particular pieces of land be rezoned to be three. Uh so that that this project can then move forward with the acquisition of this property. Uh by the county and then beginning the process of design and development. Of the skilled nursing rehabilitation facility in that location. Uh and then moving forward towards construction and operation. And so I know that there'll probably be plenty of questions about the these specifics of this, so I'll go ahead and yield to those questions now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. This as a a follow-up to my question to staff. How many legal lots of record are within this parcel as? As it currently stands, to your understanding?
How many legal lots of record? Well, I think that, you know, I. My answer would be, my message would be for legal lots of record. Uh that being said, I I do, I would not disagree that it is too legal lots of record at the current time. Uh based upon the the recorded surveys that are in place and based upon the county assessor's data. Upon which the city zoning map is based. Uh that being said, the acreage of the land that the county is specifically requesting is firm. It is nine point three seven two acres. Uh it is the parcels that are located immediately to the west of the former hacienda salud. As well as to the south. I and that that acreage is exactly what the county contracted for in its appraisal report. Uh the appraisal report contemplated five legal lots based upon an unrecorded survey in the possession of the seller. Uh that unrecorded survey obviously is does not. Have the, you know, the the does not legally change the the constitution of those lots. Uh but what is in the records of the county assessor is a lot line adjustment signed by Richard Cook in nineteen ninety eight. That split the 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 lots just to the west of the ROI into three legal lots. Uh that information is not reflected in the records of the county assessor, although that plaque and the lot line adjustment is recorded. And does bear recordations and signatures, but. For whatever reason, it has not been updated in the assessor's database.
Okay, so.
So let me just finish that up. The chairman, let me just finish that up by saying that.
In the appraisal report?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Wright, can you?
I didn't refer to it to a survey that's been recorded.
Uh yes.
What survey would that be?
I mean, it's not a certain what it is, it's a lot line adjustment. And it's a lot line adjustment for the Chumisup Court. And this this document is recorded in the Rio River County Clerk's Office. But it. For again, whatever reason, the it only the Bureau of County Assessors records. Upon which the city zoning map is based only shows one lot there. Although I believe that this this lot line adjustment was dated that nineteen ninety eight.
That's good, just so you're excited.
Yeah, nineteen ninety eight. December fourth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, my question, we're just on that particular piece, I defer back to you.
Okay.
There'd be copies for the commission if you like.
Yeah.
I think you'll find. Mr. Chair, I apologize, I can I can have these emailed to you. I think you'll find that sort of running with the same theme from the previous hearing that. Uh eight by eleven copies of surveys are are difficult to read, but. You know, blew it up and and it's it's. Recorded with the county clerk's office, and I've had these discussions with the assessors. And from time to time, things do get overlooked, things are not. Always a hundred percent accurately mapped, but. What this shows is that the that that lot was split into three lots back in nineteen ninety eight, it's never been updated. But. Going back to what Director Hussein stated is that the the acreage is firm, the U P C code does reflect that there's, you know, this specific. Pieces of property owned by the Chumisup Court. And so the county does feel that that there is some certainty as to this request.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trujillo. And that was just for clarification, because of course, this is a first step in a in a in a process, right? Um rezoning is one. Uh the next would be the sale and the survey associated with the sale and purchase by the county. Uh so at that point, it may have to be resurveyed. Um but is there kind of, is it envisioned that the lot will also incorporate a lot consolidation to make it one lot?
Uh that's a good question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, that's a good question, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, to be honest, I hadn't, I hadn't thought of that, but. Um, off the top of my head, I would say that, yes, absolutely, if this were to proceed, that the survey would. Seek to consolidate those lots into one.
Okay, and not, not to get way too far ahead of ourselves here either, but um, the, the, that area is bisected by a. By a city street. Um, so is it envisioned that there, there may be. Different uses on either side of that street, or will there be um. Different campuses, I guess, envisioned as part of this complex, or maybe even a realignment of the road to serve the. The purposes of the development.
Chairman Martinez, I wish I could give you a better answer other than that. I think that at this point. Uh, the county would leave that to, you know, pay consultants to determine how best to locate that facility and whether or not. As the chairman mentioned, there would be separate uses on the other side of the road, or whether there would be a realignment of the road. They think that it's, you know, pretty much sort of a blank slate to, for, for those. Qualified individuals to make the determination of how best to use that square footage.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. I know that's a, again, a down the road question, but um. And, and I want to thank you for acknowledging um that. With your response that you did receive from Director Hussein on the criteria, you did address um. That there are noted infrastructure, infrastructure improvements that they may be needed to serve the development. Um, those were some of the comments that the city's development team noted. Um, so again, that's, that's kind of a down the road question, you'll get to that uh during the site plan review. Um, but I'm happy that you acknowledged that in your, uh, in your letter. Um, because, you know, invariably, uh, whatever you put there, you'll have to look at the, at the infrastructure and utilities that may have to serve it. Um, so thank you for doing that. Are there any other questions from the commissions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Be Hill, and then we'll go to Commissioner Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for seeing the forum, Mr. Wright. Thank you, fellow commissioners, Mr. Truhill. What book and page number is that plat that you just passed out?
Commissioner, it, it is. Uh, book P for plat, one, two, three, six, page five, nine, seven, five.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Truhill. That's all I had. I'm just trying to pick it up on my, on my database here. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Wright.
Okay, um, double voice, one of these, as I asked, uh, Director, you say. Are you aware there's recommendation of con- conditions from city, various city departments?
Um, Commissioner Wright, I, I didn't know that they would be phrased as conditions of approval. My understanding was that that would be something that would be reviewed in the sort of site plan development, but. In a rezone request, it seemed to me like, you know, the, the zoning. What, what we're seeking is a change from one zone to another. And that as you progress down towards development, that that's where. Sort of like the more specific questions of infrastructure or, you know, improvements that would need to be made. Would be more appropriate, so I, I, it's a long way of saying that. I didn't see them as conditions for the rezone as much as I saw them as. Signaling that down the road, there would be the potential to look at these in more detail because really don't know what's going there where. But at some point, that will be more clear, hopefully.
I did, are you, are you aware of any?
No, I was, I did, I did review them, and that's why I think what Chairman Martinez was just referring to is that. In, in, in the letter from the Sanchez, we've not, can't acknowledge that in this process, as if it were to progress, there will be. You know, acknowledging that there will be infrastructure considerations that need to be taken into account. Just with any, just as with any other development, you know.
Right, and, and the reason why I'm asking is, is just to make it clear and, and get it out there on the record. That, uh. I mean, Public Works is looking at the placement of manholes, waterline upgrades, road upgrades. Commissioner, Chairman Martinez spoke about possible realignments or like consolidations. Obviously, uh. Interesting comment from wastewater, but um. Which is adequate fire protection, emergency police services, such for where they came from wastewater, um, for water. Uh, actually, the recommendation was that needed commissions, conditions before rezone. That it needs water and sewer line upgrades throughout, uh. And a question of whether or not the lines would be private. Um, yeah, I'm just running through these, so we have them on the record. Fire again, this recommendation was to propose additional rezone, you include fire procession roadway access and utilities. Um, and again, infrastructure, we've talked about it need to be upgraded, and of course, fire volume is looking for static. The other one, fly through the other case, I just wanted to get that out there, because again, we didn't have a summary of them. And part of what I'm, I'm missing here is kind of a master plan, we're doing a large acreage, but. Is it the intention that this facility is going to cover those entire almost ten acres?
Uh, Commissioner Wright, I don't think I can answer that because the. We're not at the point where the consultants have actually been able to say, this is going to go here, this is going to go there, this is. In other words, we haven't even bought the land yet. I mean, we're about two steps back from.
Well, thank you for clarifying that, that was a previous question.
Yes, or did?
The assertion was made, it was already owned by the county, but that's not correct.
No, it's the Chumisa Corporation, the county is submitting this on.
Right, no, I was, there's previous testimonies that it was wrong, already owned by the county and that. There's no evidence of that, so I just wanted to clarify that again for the record.
It's clarified, the, the county does not own this property, the county is in negotiations to buy this property. Uh, and through those negotiations, um, one of the conditions for moving in forward was that, well, the county. You know, likely not buy this property if it's not zoned for the adequate permitted use. And so that's why we're here today. And so I don't think we're at the master plan or even the development plan phase yet, we're in negotiations to purchase this. Uh, pending of, you know, more contingent upon a, a rezone to a permissive zoning designation.
I like that term. Um, cause that's a, that's one of my problems with this. B three zoning is central business district zoning under the Hispaniola code. And again, I think the key is how to figure out how to make this facility happen. Um, at this location and. And I think putting it in the wrong zone doesn't necessarily fix that problem. And I think there, and it, again, my attention, I realize there's a bond out there. The, the voters of, of Rearview County. Agreed to fund this, um, so we need to make it happen, that's the will of the people. But I'm also concerned. With some of the issues that I brought up and actually what is the configuration of lots, I think hopefully Commissioner Be Hill could bring that up. I see a city stand up on this, but again, that's kind of irrelevant what the lots are. But I think an actual survey of what is getting rezoned is important. And, and may end up being a condition from this permission, and again, as you well know, we just recommend. But we'd like to hash it out as best as we can before it goes to the governing body. Um, cause it certainly has to go there, um, to work.
Commissioner Wright, can I, was something, absolutely, there is a survey currently, it's unrecorded, but a survey. Of this acreage has been performed and it's, I believe it's in the packet because it formed the basis.
So that's the one in the appraisal.
Uh, and the appraisal at the very back, I don't believe that's it.
Just to be clear.
I don't believe that's it. No.
Cause of, well, again, man, it, absolutely, absolutely. Got to figure this out, so.
Well, actually, that may, I thought it was.
Give my expert a look. Realtors, he's the bravest all the time, should actually read him.
And it may be that, maybe that the, uh, it may be that the, uh. The lots themselves is necessarily an issue rather than the entire boundary of the area. Since it's, since we're only, we're not looking at a lot split or consolidation. It's more the boundary around the area of the rezone and the property that we're most concerned with at this point.
And Chairman Martinez.
I may chime in, chime in also.
Still have a floor, gentlemen.
Chairman.
But I'll concede.
You did the same to me.
That's all the point, but it were absolutely, that's what we're trying to figure out is what have we record re- rezoning up, that's, that's key.
I know, I think Be Hill had something to say, so, uh.
All the further Mr. Be Hill.
I believe Chairman, uh, Martinez, Commissioner Wright, Commissioner Be Hill. That unrecorded survey, I believe, is what the county has been in negotiations to purchase. It's the unrecorded survey that shows, um, what purport to be five lots, right? That was the, that was the survey that formed the basis for the appraisal. And that was the, the topic of discussion and the negotiations with the seller. Uh, explain to us what you want in this vicinity. Uh, they showed us the unrecorded survey, the appraisal took into account the unrecorded survey. They're in the process of trying to get that survey signed in and recorded. Uh, but as yet, it is still an, an unrecorded survey, but the survey was performed and does show that that's. That's the, the acreage that's, that's being sought to be rezoned, including sort of the boundaries of it. I believe, in other words, Chairman Martinez, it's, it's in the. That was submitted to the, to the, to the council, the commission.
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Truhill, this survey, you talk about, uh, how long has the, the survey been in, in motion? Um, is it currently being surveyed? Is that why it hasn't been recorded? Is it waiting for approval? What's going on?
I believe, uh, Commissioner Be Hill, that what took place is the seller owned a piece of property immediately east of the Food King. And that was probably part of this larger parcel, and so they sold that piece of property to Pains. My understanding is that this unrecorded survey was performed subsequent to that sale. In order to delineate what the Chumisacorp retained as a consequence of that sale. So if you look at the, I'm not sure if they, can they see that? Yes, so I believe what. If you see the Food King and the Domino's Pizza and the gas station there, right off Riverside Drive. Immediately to the east of that, it is sort of like, uh, wouldn't call it rectangular, but it's kind of a, you know, like a. Semi rectangular piece there. I believe that was originally part of Chumisa Corporation's holdings. They sold that to the Pay and Save fairly recently, I believe that the deeds were only recorded February of two thousand twenty two. Yes.
That's correct. I, I did dig up the plat on that, plat book Y one, page two, two, two. It does show that that's track two D, one point five seven seven acres. Uh, that was done, uh, not too long ago, I'd say within the last hundred years. Actually, uh, it looks like, uh, December of the twentieth of twenty eighteen. Um, also, there's been surveys done, this is for, for the satisfaction of the commission, there have been surveys done. Around this particular area that they are, uh, considering for rezoning. Uh, which really, uh, will define these boundaries through exclusion, so. Uh, despite that survey not being recorded, I can see just from the research I've done in the last thirty minutes that there are surveys surrounding it. Uh, there are legitimate surveys that have been, uh, submitted to county for, uh, for approval. And have been, been approved. Some of these surveys go back as far as nineteen sixty seven that I've, that I've been able to dig up. So if that, uh, eases your minds, this property is in existence legally through exclusion.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Be Hill, good info.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I got. Thank you, Commissioner Truhill.
Thank you.
I did have some, some follow up questions and then I'll, I'll, uh. Go ahead, Commissioner Wright. Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, one of the other things, and again, not totally relevant to the rezone, uh, but it did come up with. Um. When we did the rezoning for Darren's place and that ROI. And concerns not only from the public. Um, but actually the commission is, is the nature of that intersection. At Riverside and Chaos, I end up, um. And again, that's why I'm asking about what is the size of this facility? If this facility is going to cover the entire almost ten acres, the traffic generation out of there is going to be huge. Um, I mean, there's, there's already apartments back there, there's already Darren's place, now the school bus route is coming through there. And that, again, that doesn't have to be done right here, but I think that's something that both the city and the county. And state of New Mexico, because that state highway and DOT you're going to have to consider is actually signalizing that intersection. And then I'm also concerned that this is a one in, one out, um. Situation there, there is right away an easement, but it's not public that extends all the way to McCurdy. Um. But this loop with that concentration is, that's the other reason why the master plan, I think it's going to be an issue. In doing this, I realize that's kind of cart before the horse and where we are right now. But those considerations need to be made in this, um. And I did, I just wanted to ask you that question, if the county had considered that based on our experience with their employees.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Wright, I, I would say a few things, uh, one that, um. It's, it's not where we are in the process, that being said, the county has absolutely had those discussions. And, uh, is fully, fully intends to engage with the state of New Mexico, uh, Department of Transportation. As well as the city, uh, to, because I think that anybody, you know, who drives through Riverside Drive knows that, that, that. You know, particular area, uh, is in need of some attention and being a state road. Uh, you know, we feel that DOT is obviously the main stakeholder in it, but the county's, you know. Is aware of that and is, is fully, is fully prepared to, you know, to discuss that. To the greatest extent possible.
Well, hopefully this will be a public, private partnership. I mean, and, and the reality is that question, I mean, if this were developed in full density of the RM, the residential zoning. The multi-family residential zoning that it's replacing, there'd probably be even worse problem.
Right.
And, but that's the thing, the developer of this property. And that person who is adding the traffic volume to this. Is the one who needs to stand up to the plate. Um, and I think that includes both the city and county, so I just want to get that on the record, so that's out there. So that both governing bodies understand that, and, and even though we have a bond out there. Uh, yeah, certainly, that's not what I'm asking for, is full design work and eat that up, the key is to get it done. But these are the considerations that are out there. Um, and again, I love the term permissive zoning. I think there's a way to get this done. to get this done without going to be three as well, without several business districts zoning. I mean, we've got code amendments, simple ones ready tonight. Potentially to go to the, the governing body, perhaps at their, well, at their next properly notice meeting. Um, and it could be as simple as, as adding hospitals to the ROI use category. That's a one word edit, uh, that we might need to do rather than trying to put this square peg in, oh, well, it fits in B three. Let's throw it in that round hole. Let's get it done right if we can. Um, and then, just so you know, that may be where my recommendations coming from. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chair, for my questions. Thank you.
And I, Commissioner Wright, and I'm glad you brought that up. I wanted to get. I wanted to get, uh, the county's take, and I think you mentioned it, uh, earlier, Mr. Hill, that, um, can you compare, um, the use at Darren's place, which is zoned as an ROI with the proposed use of, of this area? Is it, you know, essentially very similar in, in ways? Um, would, would it be, in your opinion, more, more appropriate to, to zone this area more as an ROI similar to how Darren's place is currently zoned?
Well, I could answer that in, I'll answer that in two ways. One theoretically and only theoretically or hypothetically, you know, the way I understand ROI is residential office institutional. Um, and so depending on your definition, institutional, I think that medical facilities to me would qualify as institutional. Uh, but the reason why I don't think an ROI uh, rezoned tonight would be appropriate is because the ROI does not currently contain anything that, in my opinion, can reasonably inter- be interpreted as a medical facility. And so if the, if the, if the ROI designation, if, if there's a recommendation or a formal action to, to rezonate to ROI, um, I still don't think that the county actually would have the, you know, the, the, the right to use that particular space for, uh, the proposed or intended use. Um, I mean, I guess there are certain, there are permutations out there, like, you know, uh, you know, an ROI designation and then there's a, you know, a change to the code that makes that into a, uh, uh, that allows medical facilities or hospitals to be, uh, allowed to use. Uh, there could also be. Um. I'm trying to think. It's, I mean, I, I, I think that if, if hospitals had been under ROI, there'd have been no doubt we would have, you know, submitted for, for an ROI rezon. The fact is that it's not in there at that, the current time. You know, I think that there's even flexibility in the code in terms of, you know, public interest, uh, you know, accommodation, but I, I'm not sure how, how far that could be taken. I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure that, that ROI designation at this point would, would serve the county and move this particular negotiation forward. Um. And I think that unfortunately, because of the timing of the bonds, which I, I think the kind of, you know, municipal advisor is more qualified to elaborate on than I am, I'm not sure that the county could afford to delay this project until that, that code is updated. Um. So I think there's a lot of moving parts, but at, at the present time, there is no interest in developing this piece of property any meaningful commercial way outside of the skilled nursing and rehabilitation hos- facility or hospital. So I'm not sure if it's, it seems like it's pretty clear as mud right now. Um, but the application is for a rezon to a B three, so I think that's kind of what the county would have to stand.
Okay, thank you for that. And, and along those lines, um, that was great clarification, by the way. Um, and, and therein lies kind of our con- conundrum at times with um, uses and our current zoning code, uh, that we really need to address. Um, but until then, um, would the county be, um, I could envision, um, two specific conditions on this. Um, approval, one being, um, that the, that the approval would be on the condition that the, uh, sale of the property to the county, um, go through. The second condition would be that, uh, it would only be for a skilled nursing and rehabilitation facility. Would those two conditions be potentially acceptable to the county?
This. The se- the second, the second, um, the second condition, uh, is is, and you know, a no-brainer for the county as long as there's a specific mention that this would be a skilled nursing and rehabilitation hospital. Um, I believe that was the term that was used on the ballot and which the, which the voters approved. I don't believe it was still nursing rehabilitation facility. I believe it was a hospital. Right, so at the skilled nursing and rehabilitation hospital, uh, I think that condition would be acceptable to the county. Now, in terms of the, the, the first one that the property or that the sale move forward, uh, I don't know if the county could necessarily bind itself in that regard, but I can tell you that, you know, we're we're in, in active everyday discussions about this to the point where I'm communicating with the sellers on a, on a daily basis. You know, we did not take the step of signing a purchase and sale agreement, um, contingent upon the rezon, but we very, we were at the point where we we, we very well were going to do that, had not, just kind of run out of time with the, with the hearing. But the county does have, you know, does fully represent on the record that it is an active negotiations. You know, price has been agreed upon, uh, acreage has been agreed upon. You know, the county has, you know, the funds available to it. You know, the seller is motivated and the seller wants this used to take place on that piece of property. And I know that, you know, the, you know, the commission is not in the, in the business of, of taking sort of promises, but, um, that you know, to the extent that we can represent that that's actively taking place, um, you know, we, we, we represent that to the fullest extent.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. I, I think just the, the whole purpose of that would be just to ensure that the rezoning would only take effect. Um. When the property does become the county's, so that, that's kind of what I'm getting at to, to try to address any um, any reservations about the approval so that it's for the, for the owner or for the future owner being the county and for the proposed use for being a, a rehabilitation and a hospital of for the bond. So, uh, thank you for that. Um, I will ask any other commissioners if they have any other questions. All right, seeing none, hearing none. Um, and I can't see a few of them, so let me make sure. There you are, Vice Chair. Um, no questions? Thank you. Um, any questions, uh, from staff? Mr. Hussein?
We don't have any questions. Thank you.
And we still don't have any neighboring property owners? Is that correct?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you for that. So then, thank you, uh, Mr. Trujillo. Um. And I understand there may be some members of the general public who want to speak to us.
Hi, uh, my name is Deborah Martinez and, um, I'm, I'm, I'm very hopeful that the commissioners do the right thing. Um, there's been occasions where um, we try to, and I think Commissioner Mike said it, right? Uh, we try to put a round peg in a square. And I think doing it right the first time, so there aren't any issues down the road. Um, my concern too is there's a school and there's a lot of traffic. Um, and then there's the apartment complex, you know, on a Friday afternoon. I mean, it's, the traffic is unreal on Riverside. So I think the traffic is an issue that we might want to consider. And I just want the, in the, this committee to do the right thing, right? First, you know, first time around instead of coming back and saying, oh, we did, we did this, we should have done that, or we're forcing it because we're on a time scale. And, um, it was another nice thing, so. Well, that's it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Is there any other members of the general public who would like to speak?
You waited this long.
I'm Marcy Davis and I just came to see what the county had plans for, so informed citizen, I guess.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. All right, are there any other members of the public? We're good. Commissioner Wright gave me the thumbs up. Yes, all right. Well. All right, uh, this is the time where the applicant can go ahead and make any final comments if they would like and address any other questions from the commission. Um. Is there any kind of comments from Rio Grande County at this time?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just a comment from the county's, uh, financial advisor and project coordinator is that, you know, the intention to move this forward uh, requires that the county, the intention moves forward is that for the counties to begin issuing these bonds, there needs to be site control of a particular piece of property and that's a time-sensitive issue that, uh, you know, the Mr. Valdez is moving forward as, as we speak. And so look forward to, to doing this, you know, within the next, uh, you know, sixty days, uh, less, actually, I think it's, you know, forty-five days to ensure that, you know, we've got, uh, you know, the seller on board and that, you know, Mr. Valdez can begin to work with the financiers to start issuing the bonds and, and really get to work, so. Appreciate your consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Any questions? Any other question from the commission?
Actually, I do, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna have to put this around those on the spot if we could.
Uh, for the record, my name is Leo Valdez. I was in municipal capital markets and the financial consultants to Rio Grande County regarding to this matter.
So my question is just regard with the timing of, of the bonds and the fact that, I mean, is, is there essentially a sunset clause on the voters', um, approval of that law?
Uh, yes, uh, the voters', the bonds are authorized in four years. So we have to sell all the bonds by November of, of next year. However, you, you really don't ever want to do that because of all the process. Right now, we're assembling the team. We have a project manager. We have advisors. They're going to advise us on the number of beds and the size of the recreation facility, uh, or the process of also completing hiring an architect. So getting back to your question about a master plan together with all those individuals, we're going to take that parcel of land and try and set it in there with respect not just to the building, but the parking, the traffic, I think the traffic is an issue. We've talked to the extent of the budget, you know, we're dealing with, uh, we do have twelve million dollars in bonds that are approved by the voters. Uh, the county also was approved from a million dollar grant to go towards the purchase and or construction of the project. Uh, that's more in the process. We're looking to finalize some numbers by April first. Uh, we're planning to submit our applications to the Mexican finance before the, uh, end of April. And that will lead us to a closing for the first phase of the funding on August the first. I mean, it sounds like a long time. In our, in our business, that's tomorrow. That's your question?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. And that, because again, it's a timing and I'm assuming the grant that the county received also has a sunset on it, that it has to be used or lose. Type of situation, also four years?
Two thousand twenty-four.
Two years.
Yeah, but, but still, we, you know, actually, it's the bigger issues getting the bond sold.
Right, so my last question is related to the bonds. And, uh, and excuse me, this, it's not totally relevant, but I'm just curious and I think in my mind, it is affecting the timing of this. Um, and when the Fed looking at raising interest rates, does that raise the rates of the bonds that the city has to pay back?
If rates go up, it definitely would increase the rate the county would, uh, with the debt service of the bonds, which wouldn't impact taxpayers.
Okay, so thank you for that. So there, and I just want to make that clear to the rest of the commission. There's other, besides just doing this, there's other things at play here.
Yeah.
Um, in order to get, and really what we're trying to do is find a permissive zoning for this.
One of the reasons I mentioned, your Mexico Finance Authority, uh, they're a triple A rated entity and the money they would lend to the county is probably the lowest interest rate any entity within the state has, which obviously impacts the taxpayers to have a lower tax payment. Plans are probably going to sell maybe six million of the bonds or more, depending on what the architects and consultants tell me we need. So we don't want to have a whole impact. Then maybe perhaps the following year we sell the rest. We don't know that number yet and we're working on the budget as we speak today. We spend a considerable amount of time going through a lot of the costs, the soft costs, the acquisition and, and other matters related to this transaction. I'd have to say that the county has, in the last six, seven months since you kind of manage this project has moved, uh, a lot further on than where we hadn't, but time is running out. November of two thousand and twenty-three is tomorrow.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Robles. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Any questions? Final questions? All right, thank you, everyone. Um, and thank you, um, our representatives from, from Rio Grande County. I know it's been a long night. Um, sometimes this is how our process works, so appreciate you being here and, um, and participating and explaining, um, explaining your case. So at this time, um, it's ten oh eight, we'll go to impose the public hearing. Um. And I would just like to also mention that, uh, I'd like to thank Rio Grande County for their efforts. Obviously, this is to fulfill a community need, uh, in our valley since the, um, there's currently a lack of uh, skilled nursing facilities for our elderly folks in the valley. So thank you, uh, Rio Grande County for, for stepping up to the plate and for the voters for approving this bond. Um, I think it's definitely filling a community need. Uh, with that said, the criteria that we utilize in evaluating this request um, has been responded to by staff as well as Rio Grande County. Um, and I'd like to say that, um, it was well thought out. Um, and I find all the criteria issues that we must, uh, consider in our deliberations have been addressed. Uh, I know to my satisfaction, there might be different, different opinions from other members of the commission, but I just wanted to state that before we go ahead and take the vote because ultimately you've got to use the criteria uh, in evaluating, uh, this case and taking action on it. Um, I do recommend a couple of conditions that I did mention earlier, um, that it be tied to, uh, ownership by the county and that it be tied to bond question at hand for rehabilitation. Hospital, if I use the correct language, we will. hospital, if I use the correct language, but we'll, we'll figure out the correct language for sure, um, depending on how the commission wants to move forward here, so. Thank you all. Um, so do we have any motions from the commission at this time?
Mr. Chair? I make a motion.
Uh, Commissioner Casalos.
I make a motion to approve the rezon with the condition, the conditions that you stated.
Thank you, Commissioner Casalos. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Vehill. Uh, do we have any discussion?
Question on the motion is rezoned to what? B three?
To be three, gotcha.
Okay, just for clarity of the motion.
Okay, so the motion is to rezone the property to B three with conditions that the county will assume ownership. And the second condition is that it be utilized for a rehabilitation, let me use the correct language, hospital. Is that correct?
It's skilled nursing.
Nursing and rehab.
Patient hospital.
Thank you. Skilled nursing and rehabilitation hospital. Does that, uh, is that adequate for your motion, Commissioner Casalos?
Yes.
But just for clarification, once again, sorry, but there's a recommendation for approval. This body cannot approve the zone.
So let's let's start with it as, um, recommend, recommendation of approval of case number twenty-two-two-three, rezon request, Rio Grande County. On behalf of property owner, request rezoned a vacant land at the intersection of Pajosenda and Pajachamisaw, UPC one dash zero four seven dash one two one dash three six four dash zero nine zero to Central Business District E dash three. With conditions that the county will assume ownership and that the use will be use of the property will be for the purpose of a skilled nursing and rehabilitation hospital. Did we get a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Vehill. All right, any further discussion or clarification?
Thank you for the clarification. Uh, do you have a discussion, Mr. Chair, with any other questions?
Any discussion? Commissioner Wright, you're on.
Oh, so yeah, this is just a recommendation from this side. Um, and actually, I don't think B three fixes it. I think there's missing information. Um, I think it's critical, the UPC that we're referring to, according to the record to the Rio Grande County assessor, or forecaster, fourteen acre parcel. Again, it's two different parcels. It's not a multi-part polygon. I actually do this kind of mapping for, um, county a little bit south of here. I think the survey that, that's in hand should be ready and prepared for the city council. Um, I mean, we did see a reference in about half of an eight and a half by eleven page, um, appraisal. But I think the governing body needs to be super clear in what's getting rezoned. And that these are lots of legal record. Again, it appears, can't see it here. Um, but it appears that was a plaque approved by the city, uh, the one that we referenced on the record. Um, and that's the thing, it's still, this is within the planning and planning jurisdiction of the city of Espaoli, even though it's Rio Grande County. I think the issue is the traffic rights, a big thing in the infrastructure that's in there. And I would encourage as well that there be some discussion of looking or working with the owner to the south and perhaps seeking an easement through there to get additional access to Riverside. Given the apartments, Darren's place, a stool and the silver tsunami of elderly rehab patients that's coming down the road because of our aging society. If you look at the census figures, there's this balloon of, uh, white fraternity people my age. That, that the citizens of the state and the county are gonna have to take care of, um, in the city. So again, I, I don't think this is ready to go yet, but I also recognize the urgency. So I will be voting against this recommendation in the hopes that, uh, that city council and the, and the governing body of the, uh, Rio Grande County, county commissioners, take a good look at some of these issues. I think this is a huge thing for the community and the county. I think ROI is appropriate and if you actually read that, this is a district intended to provide a place for those type of institutional and commercial activities that require separate buildings and building groups surrounded by landscape yards and open area. Land space and aesthetic requirements of the uses make them desirable. That's the perfect zoning for this. Granted, what's in there and the vision from forty years ago was art galleries, assembly halls for nonprofits, libraries, museums, music conservatories, and side-built single-family homes. A mixed-use development in here could have huge benefits, a public-private partnership and actually be a huge economic stimulus to both the city and county, but also be a really great asset to our city. And again, that's never come to fruition. But a one-word edit to put, actually, three words that we have to match the bond, but that isn't allowed use in here. And this problem solved. Rezoning to Central Business District zoning for ten acres of vacant land surrounded by other vacant land and some other different mixed uses. Doesn't make sense. This should be a transitional area, an ROI. It should be a live workplace. What if there were apartments right next to this hospital where the employees could literally walk to work and walk across the street to the food gate? And we don't have traffic and that is one of the arguments for solving the traffic problem that we have. Um, and it's, you know, let's break out the box on this, do it quickly. But given that, and again, this is just a recommendation from my commission, but I'm gonna vote against the motion, but it's going to the city council anyway. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's my decision.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. And I don't disagree with anything you said there. Uh, I just think, yeah, our, our code is, it is what it is and we're trying to improve on that, uh, to make it clearer. Hopefully, our future exercise of rezoning can help address some of these issues. Um, I think for now, with the conditions, um, we can ensure that the uses as proposed, um, are are what, um, the applicant has, has, is, is, uh, is intending. Um, also, as far as like the infrastructure needs, the traffic and the utilities and all that, of course, those are all issues that are, will need to be addressed by design professionals, as Mr. through, through you had mentioned. Um, and that's, you know, forthcoming and in the next step of this process, so um, look forward to, to that. But thank you for those thoughts, Mr. Wright. Um, are there any other discussion comments from the commission? All right. Hearing none, seeing no hands. Director Hussein, please call the roll.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Martinez?
In favor of the motion?
Mr. Vehill?
In favor of the motion?
Mr. Wright?
Against the motion to recommend rezoning to B three?
Ms. Cantona?
Against motion?
Salas in favor? Chair Martinez?
In favor of the motion with the conditions presented?
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Robert, motion carries three of questions.
Commissioner Sanchez, Rio Grande County manager, thank you for your time and your consideration. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez, Mr. Vehill, Mr. Valdez. We appreciate you being here. Thank you very much. All right, folks, uh, we're on item number four. A pool of minutes. It is ten twenty-one P M. Ten twenty-one P M. Would the commission like to continue?
How about we continue, but can we take another short break? Or if we want to, we just have administrative items left. But it might be wise to get them off the table.
That's my question. Commissioner Wright, say that again.
I said that I'm in favor of trying to get our administrative items off the table, but I would like a short break. Um, I think it's important we do that. Is, uh, we might not be here to.
I hear that.
Just saying, let's get it done. Don't push it down the road, but if we can have just a super short break.
Ten forty-eight.
That's a discussion. Ten forty-eight. I just have a, 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 or, uh, quite a, where it says ten P M under our German time with that, this, this one. We should have a dinner here. Should open the camera. Yeah. This is weird for the person. At least you should.
All right, are we ready to go again? Move on to item number eight, approval of minutes for the February tenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Are there any changes from the commission?
Mr. Chair, just a couple that otherwise are like super good. And again, they're not paginated, which would be super rough old right now.
Yes, of course.
But, uh, okay, it's twenty-five pages a minute. Well, one, Mr. Chair, is a clarification on one of your statements. Which is on page six. That begins with, they continue to, to discuss the housing standards. Seven paragraphs down. That begins with Chair Martinez and ends with the word structure. So he mentioned the cost plan being part of their code. the applicant must attach to city services to include water, sewer, and waste collection. And again, just to be this, this is a motion. These are conditions of approval that end up in the findings. It's important they get. Numbered that way. Uh, next one is page. Fourteen and again, we're going to deal with the findings on this case. Here in a moment. Uh. But yeah, this is a paragraph that begins old business. December ninth, twenty twenty-one, meeting approval of final decisions. Case number twenty-one dash twelve. In the middle of that paragraph, it says he stated the presidents that were on the October eighth, twenty twenty dash twenty. Strike the second twenty. Fighting and zoning commission unanimous, blah, 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 goes down. Um. To cite the governing body by unanimous would both deny the approval of proposed city investment bill ordinance, number twenty-nine. Strike the words investment bill. Following page on the opposite side where Chairman Martinez pointed out that they had edits in addition and asked if there was a notion that should read motion. And I believe.
I'm sorry, page twenty-one.
Which is a long block even. Um. Hard, they could fix that by very simply, by carefully wording. It's in that paragraph. In the middle of that paragraph. Their sentence says allow them to do modern zoning, mixed-use zoning in live workspaces. That should read live workspaces. And believe it or not, I think that's it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Wright. Any other? Amendments by the Commission?
Yes, I tried to keep count, just like Commissioner Wright, but I counted as page ten, but the easiest way to find it is at the bottom. It says October fourteen, twenty twenty-one. So if you go up to the top of the page and one, two, three, four, five, I'll call up in the the heaviest paragraph, number five, I believe that is. Go sort of to the close to the end where it says Commissioner Wright and second by Dyna Quintana. That should say Commissioner Quintana. And then on the following page, one, two, three, four, the fourth paragraph. Go to the, what looks like maybe like the second to the last sentence. She stated that she was not sure that she attacked it with the fire department. That's supposed to say attached it. Attacked it. She stated that she would have thought that she would have been talking about giving her standards. Yeah, I like to use the fire department as my means of attack.
I actually read what?
Attached.
Yeah.
Any others? And the others, commissioners? They do have one at the beginning. Let me find it. On page two. The second paragraph. So it says Chairman Martinez stated. So. The last sentence. He explained that the applicants had been provided notice that it was going to be removed. Although there was some this communication. Um, I think the intent there was that he explained that the applicants. He explained that there were attempts to provide the applicant's notice.
So let's agree, you explain the attempts.
That there were attempts to provide the applicant's notice that it was going to be removed.
To provide. Gotcha.
That's all I got. Is that it?
There are no further amendments. I move to approve with all the amendments cited by the Commission.
We've got a motion to approve the February tenth, twenty twenty-two minutes by Commissioner Wright and a second by Vice Chair, I mean, some Martinez. Uh, any further discussion? All right, roll call, Director.
Commissioner Chair, Mr. Martinez.
In favor?
Commissioner Martinez.
In favor?
Commissioner Wright.
In favor of the motion to approve the amended bills?
Commissioner Quintana?
In favor.
Commissioner Salas?
Right, thank you, Director. We're on item number nine, old business. December ninth, twenty twenty-one, meeting approval of final decisions, case twenty twenty-one dash fourteen.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Wright.
Um, couple of things. First paragraph, the matter came before a forum of city planning and zoning commission. For, it was actually multiple public hearings, so it should say for public hearings. On. October fourteenth, I'm not sure what the day of the week was. Can find that real quick. Oh, Thursday, duh. It's getting late.
I was going to say it should be, should be a Thursday.
It'd be a Thursday, sorry. On Thursday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, and Thursday, December ninth, twenty twenty-one. Um. Because we did actually hold a public hearing on that day. Um. It just got tabled at that meeting. Finding a fact number five. I don't understand why that's in there, and I think it should be starting, we weren't, this didn't involve a variance to the specific regulations of chapter three fifty or a variance review. So it's not relevant to these findings. Um, in number six. Correct me if I'm wrong. But number six states that the planning and use department, planning and land use department recommended to deny this rezon request during the public hearing, stating that it is spot zoning. I do not believe that was the case. Was it just the opposite?
Yes.
So number six should read recommended to approve. The rezoner request and spot zoning had nothing to do with it. Strike. And stating that it is spot zoning. Uh, in number seven, during the public hearing. Uh. It should read Mr. Jose Archuleta. And Miss, so insert Jose, the first name of the gentleman who spoke. And Ms. Valera Archuleta, the Navy property owners appeared and testified at their testimony, which is actually in opposition to the rezoning request. So I would say that that should say appeared and testified in opposition to the rezoning request. That was my recollection. Um. And again, I'm not sure about this, but in the conclusions of law. It's stating the planning and zoning commission concludes the applicant has not met the applicable full review criteria for approval, for the approval. I don't think that fits at all with the action of the commission. Um. But rather it should state that the planning and zoning commission concludes the application was not in the best entrance of the city or the neighborhood in question and therefore recommends denial of the rezoning request. And again, it was a recommendation of denial, not a final action by this party. And then on the second page, it says to deny the reason request, I would just strike that with what I just said. And then further, the planning and zoning commission is acting under the authority granted by the development code in recommending denial of this application. Strike the words approving this application. We did not approve it. Recommended denial. And I'm also not sure if that needs to be reviewed. Uh. By Mr. T O, but it's. I, I, I'm a little concerned that these are not signed before we see it. I mean, there is clearly glaring errors in these findings, completely the opposite of what was done. Um. But I think we need to get them approved. So with those amendments, Mr. Chair, I would look for approval unless someone found something else.
Gotcha.
All right. That's all I got. Is that it?
There are no further amendments. I move to approve with all the amendments cited by the commission.
We've got a motion to approve the February tenth twenty twenty-two minutes by Commissioner Wright and a second advice Vice Chair, I mean, so Martinez. Uh, any further discussion? All right, roll call, Director.
Commissioner Chair, Mr. Martinez.
In favor.
In favor.
Commissioner Beal.
In favor.
Commissioner Wright.
In favor of the most of the approved amended bills.
Commissioner.
In favor.
Commissioner.
Right, thank you, Director. We're on item number nine, old business. December ninth, twenty twenty-one meeting approval of final decisions case twenty twenty-one dash fourteen.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Wright.
Couple of things. Uh, first paragraph, the matter came before a forum of city planning and zoning commission. For it was actually multiple public hearings, so it should say for public hearings. On. October fourteenth, I'm not sure what the day of the week was. Can find that real quick. Oh, Thursday, duh. It's getting late.
I was gonna say it should be, it should be a Thursday.
It'd be a Thursday, sorry. On Thursday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, and Thursday, December ninth, twenty twenty-one. Cause we did actually hold a public hearing on that day. It just got tabled at that meeting. Finding a fact number five. I don't understand why that's in there, and I think it should be strictly we weren't. This didn't involve a variance to the specific regulations of chapter three fifty. Or a variance review, so it's not relevant to these findings. Um, in number six. And correct me if I'm wrong. But number six states that the planning and use department, planning and land use department recommended to deny this rezon request. During the public hearing stating that it is spot zoning. I do not. Believe that was the case. Was it just the opposite?
Yes.
So number six should read recommended to approve. The reason of requests and spot zoning had nothing to do with it. Strike. And stating that it is spot zoning. Uh, in number seven, during the public hearing. It should read Mister Jose Archuleta. And miss, so insert Jose, the first name of the gentleman who spoke. And Miss Valera Archuleta, the Navy property owners appeared and testified at. Their testimony, which is actually in opposition to the rezoning request. So I would say that. That should say appeared and testified in opposition to the rezoning request. That was my recollection. And again, I'm not sure about this, but in the conclusions of law. It's stating the planning and zoning commission concludes the applicant has not met the applicable. Full review criteria for approval for the approval. I don't think that fits at all with the action of the commission. But rather it should state that the planning and zoning commission concludes the application was not in the best entrance of the city or the neighborhood in question. And therefore recommends denial of the rezoning request. And again, it was a recommendation of denial, not a final action by this body. Um, and then on the second page, it says to deny the reason request, I would just. Strike that with what I just said. And then further, the planning and zoning commission is acting under the authority granted. By the development code in recommending denial of this application. Strike the words approving this application. We did not approve it, recommended denial. And I'm also not sure if that needs to be reviewed. By Mister ATO, but it's. I, I, I'm a little concerned. That these are not signed before we see it. I mean, there is clearly glaring errors in these findings, completely the opposite of what was done. But I think we need to get them approved. So with those amendments, Mister Chair, I would. Look for approval unless someone found something else.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Wright. Uh, any other commissioners want to chime in? Seeing none, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
So.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. The second by Commissioner Hill. All right. Any discussion? Roll call Mister Hussein.
Commissioner. In favor. Mister Wright.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Chair, Mr. Martinez.
Uh, staying, I was not present in this hearing, so.
This was asked by five one S H.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Hussein. We have the next item number two, February tenth, twenty twenty-two meeting approval of final decision for case twenty twenty-two dash one.
Same thing, Mister Chair. I'll go straight to it.
Commissioner.
Item number five again refers to variance to specific regulations of chapter three fifty. I don't think that's applicable, it should be stricted. We were not hearing a variance. Um, however, it could be, should be replaced. With the statement that the planning and zoning commission recognized a twenty seventeen. Awarding a variance to setback requirements for the same property in question. And if I had that case number I provided, but I can't find it. We added our last meeting, but I think that reference is good enough to tie back to the time of. To the year that variance was awarded to the same property. Oh, it's twenty seventeen. I guarantee that's in the minutes we just approved, but the actual case number from twenty seventeen.
Only twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen, twenty three, or maybe twenty one.
Oh, I have it, Mister Chair. Sorry.
Yeah, we can, we can have staff verify that and we'll make sure it's in there when the final ones come for signature, Commissioner.
Case number twenty seventeen dash show three.
All right, that was clear. Thank you.
Um. And then other conclusions of law. Basically, statement under one. It says that to place the mobile home. I think that should read. To place the mobile home within the dimension. Variance grounded under case number twenty seventeen dash oh three. And that's all I had on those. But again, the question will, no signature from the city attorney. And they had to commission to preview.
So I do have a question on finding the fact. Uh, item number six, the planning and land use department recommended to approve the placement. Um, wasn't that one, didn't you recommend to deny?
It was.
Director Hussein.
The director confirmed that, Mister Chair. Not sure you can hear that.
I got it.
I missed out, I'm sorry.
Any other changes? Uh, we have a motion to approve as amended.
I move to approve with the amendment cited by Mister Wright and Chairman Martinez.
We'll sec, I'll second it.
All right, second by Commissioner V Hill. Further discussion? Right, roll call, Director.
Commissioner. Mr. Cantana.
In favor.
Mister Wright.
Favor.
Mister.
In favor.
Commissioner Chair, Ms. Martinez.
In favor.
Commissioner Anissa Martinez.
In favor.
This was passed.
All right, thank you folks. All right, next items, item number ten, letters from staff. I know Director Hussein included some items in here as a follow-up. To previous conversation about tax amendments regarding mobile homes. Director Hussein, I know it's getting late. How would you like to proceed here?
Is, I, I, I would say, but it's like the commission, whatever they want to decide will go accordingly.
Missioners, would you like to continue on this one or, or table this for? Or maybe a next meeting depending on. How things go with.
Mister Chair, I'd like the other, uh, the directors work on this and actually push through this if we did.
No. Or I'd say. Commissioners, how would you like to proceed? Commissioner Wright recommends we, we push along here. I'm, I'm fine with it if, if you all are okay with it.
What are we gonna leave the next commission? We gotta leave them to something.
You'd like to make a motion to table?
Try, let's go. Let's go forward.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let's.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, Director, go, go ahead, right?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, there's, there's a apparent delay, so go ahead. You got the floor.
Yeah, uh, thank you so much, uh, Chairman Martinez and the honorable members of the planning commission. Uh, this is actually our effort to not. Probably cast a big fish, maybe just to fix smaller problems and maybe our step towards the bigger changes. And there, as per you, there, there's this discussion item, just get your feedback on it before we bring as an action item. If it less, planning commission being. So there's few changes that we want to recommend, and this is in our. Chapter three fifty of zoning and development for our city code and, and six fifteen individual mobile homes and. Mobile home parks, which actually we do not have mobile home park standards in our code. So you want to address two issues. One, the dilapidated structures. Especially and specifically the mobile homes and manufactured house, houses. And then introducing the mobile home parks. This is not the comprehensive design standards. It's just certain standards for the mobile parks that at least we have some wordings to direct and. And, and they have something guidelines for the mobile home parks that they are community because there are certain communities who. When they place a mobile home, we do not have direction for them unless we, we just see what zone district they are in. So we just want to make certain standards of there and then. One of the biggest issue that we faced last time with the B two, there was no restaurant language, so we just added restaurant in there. So it is, it be one or B two as well. So when we go to our six fifteen. D as a delta, and then we added to promote that we give this development in our established stick bill neighborhood. Planning commission has authority to decide the placement of manufactured mobile homes should be permitted to. Promote the well-being of the community because there are certain cases where we observe. I mean, we, we will change the language here to make it more feasible that only. Stick the home will be allowed. And lots, lots of the frontage or of our windows to have more. Better probably to improve the image of the community, we would also review or request that only sticked house will be allowed on. The river side ride, north river side ride, but see you at February. And if there is a, we have observed, there is a sticked house, the accessory structure are potentially they want to break a new. Structure developers, which is they always have a plan commission, but it would be. A manufacturing, sorry, it would not be a manufacturer, rather it would be a sticker. Just to conform to what actually they have a value. So accessory sources and about your public sticker. The mobile home manufacturing houses will not get. Department of HUD standards would not be allowed in the city limits. Observing the. Issues of. Safety. And if manufacturing mobile placement has a negative impact on the community or neighborhood. For example, decrease in the property values. Neighborhood quality or impact on the neighborhood aesthetics, planning commission has authority to allow or reject the placement of manufactured house in a large zone districts. And then we observe that some people do not put skirting on there. And do not remove the, the axles and tires, the beams. So just to promote that, you just add the lack of that, they should. Place skirting within the ninety days of the placement of mobile home. That is in scurrying number three. And then before we move, if there is any suggestion, this is.
Director, a quick question. Um, has the land use attorney reviewed any of these suggestions quite yet?
They, so I took some suggestions from them, but mine already has not been taken because we don't know what, bring up. Once you finalize this, we'll take it from back to. Because this is just a suggestion.
Thank you for that clarification.
But the next draft that will bring will be reviewed by the land use attorney and our city attorney. Or we can rather use the, the placement of mobile home, the frontage would be subject to the planning commission approval.
Okay, or, or we had a point to have some discussion or questions, uh, Director. I don't want to interrupt you if you, if you need to.
Yes, I have that. Before we move to the mobile home parks, I have.
Uh, commissioners, any questions for Director Hussein this time?
Oh. I'd just rather go through them all at the end. I do have, based on what we got, if you want to go ahead and gather them all apart. And save our questions for. For the end end, at my preference, Mister Chair.
Okay, I'm good with that. So go ahead and continue, Director.
So for the mobile parks, it's just that you want to introduce some section from the mobile home parks. You, you welcome to suggest if you want more detail. And more comprehensive mobile home park ordinance. And we will be happy to bring back this just our effort to at least have some language so we can have just a basic guidelines for the mobile home parks. So having said that, any applicant must submit a general development plan. For any mobile home park, show the location of the building, mobile home sliding control, back to screen, land use. General design of parking both for the residents and the guests. And then you may have for the mobile home parks, it's going to be two and a half acre. Why we did that, the minimum, because I looked at the Rio River County, they have a minimum. Their area for two and a half acres, so just to have. To confirm to the county because we are mostly within the Rio River County, that's why Rob is, you know. Right, uh, acreage area and the provision of elegant open space. So then next to that, see, we have nine mobile homes per acre. Having said that, that acre is forty-three thousand and five hundred square feet. Want to have at least two thousand square feet for every five mobile homes. For open space or parks or something that people can enjoy as an open space. And then there will be five acres between the mobile home and the property line and twenty feet of. Distance between each mobile home. Of two off street parking for each mobile home. Which parking shall be paid and copied with asphalt or gravel. Mobile home should be occupied unless it is connected to adequate utilities. Providing with the skirting of a durable material and stabilized and anchored according to the regulation of the housing division. Of our state, that all mobile homes will be skirted within the ninety days. Any existing non-photographic mobile parts shall not be enlarged, intensified, increased or extended or occupied. Or occupy a greater area that will then occupy a factor here to. Adoption of this mobile parks. And I spent here for a bit, if you have any recommendations, suggestions or questions.
Thank you, Director Hussein. Um, understanding this is kind of a first pass, um, kind of. First stab at this. Um, I don't know if we want to get into any great until given the time. Um, but if there's any initial thoughts from the commission, uh, that staff can run with. Um, we did have a time after the last meeting where we talked about providing any ideas to the director. Uh, one of mine was, uh, the notion of limiting, uh, mobile home placement on the front edge of major streets. And that is noted in here. You know, of course, that could be expanded. There's several streets noted, I think, uh, Pasadena and Yacht, the thirty-six, Ferry Lane. Um, it could go on to, to identify others like La Jolla Street. Um, you know. On and on, uh, it could, it could be conveyed through a map. Um, the other suggestion I had, uh, I think the first time when we were talking about this was. Um, and, and again, this could be covered through use of a, of a GIS map, is that any currently stick-built subdivisions, established subdivisions. Um, be limited to stick-built type homes. So it would basically eliminate any, uh, approval of placement. Of mobile homes within an already established residential subdivision that's a stick-built. Um, no matter the, the current zoning. So that was another idea that I had passed along, so. But, um, any other commissioners want to share their thoughts? But, um, any other commissioners want to share their thoughts this time?
Have noise, Chairman, your, like, thank you.
Commissioner Ray.
I've heard basically super quick, super quick, uh, because I did go through this. So when the location for restricted districts. Uh, that's on page two of your presentation. And it flows over to page three. But based on what we just did tonight, B three isn't included in here is restricted zone. So we're gonna have mobile homes right next to our, uh, well, this is precise model language. Next door are skilled nursing facility, that should be added in here.
Uh, what should be added again?
B three is a restricted zone.
For mobile homes. It is restricted already.
Not in the copy that we're looking at. And I wrote off the copy we're presented.
Okay.
It might be in another portion of the. But but it should be included, should be included in everything.
Right, and actually, I don't think. Okay, yeah, the that have a sort of, yeah, that's probably right, yeah. Um. I do have a concern if you're doing the edits, there are multiple references and at least six paragraphs to a building inspector. Um, that should be changed to a building inspector or someone else. Otherwise, it's going to render this unenforceable if that position doesn't exist in the city.
Which one are you breaking?
This is the requirements for the use of mobile homes that's under category D on page three. Building inspector is referred to in paragraph number one, number number one. It's also in section E. In paragraphs one, two, and three. And also in section G. Any of those sections, if you want this enforceable, should include another position. Um. Or. GIS specialists. I'm not sure.
Or let's just say, all right.
Uh, I don't want to be doing this. Although I wouldn't get paid. I'm in the first full paragraph. Number four on page three.
Okay.
That should be upper place, planning commission. And a manufactured mobile home. Is should be permitted. Strike is.
Number three.
Number four.
Okay.
Capitalize places is bold a paragraph. You have is should, is should, should be. Uh. I appreciate the chair's comment and the intention of doing these front roads on the Yate Riverside, Fairview and State Highway seventy six. However, that's in direct conflict with B two zoning. Um. Where residential structures aren't allowed, and that's not an amendment we're doing.
Manufacturer housing.
I'm just giving you my comments, but I didn't want to argue it's how it's. Uh.
Yeah, there, there, there's a little more thought that we need to go into that, that's understood.
Yeah, and then in number six, um. If it's a stick built home, only still stick built accessory structures would be allowed. I think you're going to get pushback on that for actually decent metal sheds and like carports that get put up. Um, that may not necessarily be stick built. I think we may need to define what stick built is in number seven, uh, should. Instead of would not be allowed. The word shall should be used, shall not be allowed, that's much more enforceable and enforceable in the law. Um. Yeah, the other one's just the IE and that's just typos that don't need to go over that, there's the building inspector comments. Um. In the mobile home parks section on page four. Why are we going to two and a half acres?
I I mentioned that the area we're calling has two and a half acres, just to perform with the area we're calling.
City of Los Angeles, we all can do what we want.
Exactly.
Current code for an ME DVD which could be overlaid on any district is. And that's a question I have too, what happens to this section of the code? Because it seems to be in conflict with what's written here. Um. And this is the M H P dash P U D manufactured housing park in Plandine Development Zone. That has a three acre minimum and is basically an overlay zone. That can be allowed in any district except L one. I'm sorry, L I and H I, light and heavy industrial. That's in conflict with the link that we have here, that needs to be. Um, pulled together and I would actually recommend if you want to do mobile home parks. You don't have to be Rio River County, we're denser than Rio River County. I say indeed, five acres to do that. I mean, what's your intention? I thought Phil Chacon's thing that we did. In the old Joe, that I haven't looked at it with a five acre.
His parcels by.
But which was what allowed him to even apply for it. So again, I I think the two and a half acres is way too small. And it's just encouraging this in the little pockets, if you really want to do a mobile home park. Get some acres, there's still properties that can do that based on the other zoning categories that they be allowed in. Uh.
What's one equal categories that you want to suggest would be allowing? The whole of all parts.
So that's what I'm telling you, your current code, unless you fix this section of the code. Is they can be anywhere except L I and H I, that's what the current code says. So it doesn't matter what this says, if you've got a conflict, city's going to be in a rock and a hard place with an apple. If you don't fix both portions of the code. Uh, moving on, Roman numeral five and Roman numeral six, those actually conflict between these other, between themselves. At least five foot clearance, I would suggest and say AK setback between the mobile home and the property line. And then you say there has to be twenty feet from any mobile home. And twenty feet from the right away easement and in and ten feet from the property line of the mobile home park. Those need to be resolved, you have a conflict there. The one thing I would suggest at the end is that is that the city considered. Um. Because we have a section, this would be, this would be Roman numeral ten, we have a section that says not that. Any existing non conforming mobile home parks will not be enlarged and testified increased, totally agree with that. I would suggest that the city put. A sunset clause in there, that essentially. You can't say, you can't outlaw right away, but you can absolutely enact the sunset clause. That any existing non conforming mobile home parks. Um. Shall be allowed to operate until twenty thirty two. At that point, they have to cover the compliance or get converted from the mobile. And it could be, it could be a ten year thing, I just threw that date out there, be a ten year thing, it could be a fifteen year thing. So you don't take away that existing property, right? And again, if those things depreciate, you actually get rid of them.
So we were not essentially, this, this one, but up here, we're not essentially restricting them. We're not, we just restrict them to enlarge.
I understand, what I'm suggesting is you sunset. I completely understand what you have there and totally agree with it. But I'm saying go a step farther and sunset, but not for the uses. That is legal under case law and state statute in Mexico. You really want to address the problem, get serious for the sunset. Uh. As far as the other one, I see the fix, the restaurant was added to B two. But again, I would still prefer what was in the code that when I started as a commissioner. Is that any, rather than just saying that, you say any use permitted in a B one local commercial district. And I would strike what's in what used to be in there except for mixed use buildings, I think you need to allow mixed use in commercial. And that fixes it in here, but any use permitted in B one should be allowed in B two, and then this amendment. Works.
Then why we should have, should not have, just, just wanted, just curious. Why do we have that B one being, why don't we just say B one at that and just save it?
It's broken, okay, let's fix it. So right now, I'm also now not allowed to operate a bank in B two. Where are the banks? I missed out.
There, there are banks. They they close to that.
I'm not allowed to operate a bakery, goods store, bookstore, or camera shop. Any of these things that aren't listed. In B two that are allowed in B one, I'm not allowed to do that in B two. Why, let's fix the code and add what was should inadvertently struck it.
It's I actually.
And allow the use, B one is a more intense commercial use. I mean, sorry, B two is more intense commercial use than B one, correct?
Correct.
What was wrong with the old code? Why can't you just allow that? And again, it's just my recommendation, I don't want to get into an argument, it's late. But that fixes this. And it's the same thing, I would suggest, based on our communication. And actually, my conversations with the county attorney when he left. They'd rather be in ROI zone, why not fix that right now and add hospitals ROI use tape? These are simple, simple fixes that we can do right now. Simple text amendment, this could go forward while it wasn't an action item here. But I'd be willing to hold a special session to look at another draft of this. Get it adopted by a forum with the sitting commission. And that way you can take it to the. To the governing body. Whoever said, I don't know if they're beating the twenty second, there's no way we could, I that, but we certainly have. You can have tax amendments before the governing body. In April. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Ray, I think a lot of those suggestions are. Are good, um, and consistent with our, our prior case, I would say since we're doing this. We might as well, might as well add skilled nursing facilities in ROI as well, that's a simple add on, I agree. Yeah, so let's.
That is skilled nursing facility for hospitals ROI, you couldn't, he asked for you to repeat a message here, sorry.
Oh. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Kintana.
I just want to go back to page three to further discuss item number six. Commissioner Wright, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Hussein. We were talking about when we sat down and listened about this accessory buildings and I don't think we can call it anything else. If somebody wanted to put a second presidential building on the top.
That is not allowed, if you can have only one building.
Remember when we cited the example that we have somebody, a family home on a larger lot. We wanted to put the daughter at the back of the property, put a mobile home there. Is that what number six is?
Correct, so. The, the, the reason is. The secondary year comes to the mission. That's not a administrative or. However. Here in Chicago, I'm not perfect, it's proper, I wonder like, oh, this is here.
Yeah.
So we, we, I mean, if that happened in the history, we can't probably fix that, but. Legally, it will come to the planning commission, planning commission definitely say, okay, no, we won't system. If you want to put it as secondly structure, secondary or secondary, again, it will be a stick.
It was my impression when you spoke that if the existing structure was cycle. The second structure will match the same structure.
That is correct.
Okay, so Commissioner Wright was talking about our points and things like that.
Then stop what this is.
Yeah, so is this, is the difficult word here accessory. And should we identify it in a second living?
Or residential development.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that makes sense, but people, this may be the contradiction with our. Development table that says developing you only one developing year, then we have to add, it's subject to approval of the panic.
You just get very request. Trust me. Doing this for a few turns, it's said probably about six of over that sixteen year. A request for a second. They came into this. So I generally got a group.
He, that was a legit case. Hmm, that was, that was a.
No, I'm talking about my history and sitting here over sixteen years, so probably six approvals. I read this, it happens, you say.
Is there any other recommendation from any member of the commission?
It's a good first, I think it's a good first start, good input from the commission. I think we're all starting to fade here, I know I am. Commissioner Kintana kept me on. So, thank, thank you, Director, uh, this is a good start. I think it it'll deserve, uh, some more review, uh, please take the suggestions given tonight. Um, if you want to proceed to getting some input from the city attorney as well. Um, yes, the, I think that would be appropriate. Um, so again, great first start, I think, uh, we have a little more work to do, maybe a, another review or two. And then we'll, we'll take it from there.
Sounds good. Thank you, Member of the Mission, the Mr. Chair, I really appreciate your suggestion, recommendation.
All right, thank you, Director. All right, we're on item number eleven matters from the commission, uh, are there any matters from the commission?
Well, this in regards to this, is there any way that you'd be ready before the next meeting? Please, please. Legal review and.
Uh, it may not be because I have to go and check the first office, but it, I think it's two weeks. Uh, notice that if we want to change anything in the code, I can put it in some ordinance. I'll put it in the paper. And and just a public notice, very process, or it may not be possible.
I'm not sure that's true with text amendments. But it might be, it might be, but it's just, just curious. And I put you under the gun to get it done. And I put you out of the game to get it done.
What I would recommend is.
Wait till I.
Whatever recommend is. Very Commissioner Ray, what I would recommend is that we ask staff to. Work on this at the earliest possible time so we can see it again. I think that would be appropriate.
Yes, we'll probably make another action at our next. Next meeting.
Okay. All right, well, any other matters from the commission?
Just to clear up our noticing, I'll deal with that with the director afterward.
What was that, Commissioner Ray?
Just to clear up some noticing, I mean, I got handouts for the commission, but to get that done. We were in the midst of not being able to hold the hearings tonight because of the way it was nervous.
Yeah. Yeah, there there was some discussion about that prior to the meeting.
Oh, I'll hand these out after adjournment.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Well. And thank you, Commissioner. Sorry I couldn't be there with you guys tonight. But. Worked out well. Thanks for getting the technology worked out. Robert and Mohammed. We're not sure unless anybody has special insight about how the new administration is going to. You know, work with this commission. Who knows? I don't. So maybe we'll see you next time. Maybe we won't. I don't know. But you all been great to work with regardless of what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Absolutely. Pleasure to work with each and every one of you.
Yeah. Likewise, thank you all. You've been, you've been great. So with that, we'll, we'll move on to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion by affirmation, all in favor.
Bye.
Hi.
Have a good one.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Good night. Thank you, everybody.
All right. See you guys around. Don't run me over. Seen hitchhiking on the road. Or just plain survey. Good night.